Call to order. Susan online, we have a quorum, may we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Styx.
Here.
Mayor Potem Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Here. And Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Thank you, Gail, and welcome, everyone, to the September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Ojai City Council. Councilmember Blatz, will you please say the pledge?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. And approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Blatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Mayor Styx.
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll begin tonight with a presentation, the presentation of our proclamation in memory of Nathan Rhodes. And Mayor Potem Haney, you're going to give a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read from something that's been prepared. It makes it easier and it makes it better that I don't forget anything or any names, so bear with me. Last month, Steve Weed, Steve, if you can stand up, please. Just one of the, one of the good guys in our community. Steve Weed reached out to me about a story, with a story about a friend, an inspirational young man that our, that our community lost too soon recently. Nate's parents, Larry and Heidi Roach, are right here in the front. They're here tonight to share with us this proclamation in honor of Nordoff graduate Nate Rhodes, who overcame a series of challenges to help others and continues to do so through his legacy. Nate died at the age of twenty-one in a traffic accident. His legacy is Nate's Place. It's a wellness center, and I'm sure everyone's been reading online about all the events that are being taking place recently regarding him and, and what the Wellness Center is going to do for the city of Auctionard, the community of Auctionard, and our community, I should say, all communities in Ventura County. Is his partner Autumn, is Autumn here?
Autumn's not here.
Okay.
She's playing volleyball for Ventura College.
That's fine. We have a brief video to share honoring his life and legacy. Following that, Mayor Styx here will issue the proclamation, and we'd like to give you folks a couple of minutes to share your, your thoughts. Are we, Gail, we're going to do the video first, or, there you go. Autumn, sorry.
Nathan taught me to see life through a lens of positivity. He made me believe I was capable of things I never thought were possible. Anytime the phone rang or a text came in that someone was struggling, Nate made room for them and made sure that they were being heard and supported in any way that he could.
He did have some substance abuse issues when he was in middle teenage years, but, I mean, he went to twelve-step meetings, he got a recovery coach, and I was so proud of him because as a teenager, to have to do that and go through that, and then really committed himself to fitness.
Dude, I was like, I'm so proud of you. I was like, your determination, the things you've overcome, that's not easy now. Kids my age, they're subject to being entitled. He was an example of someone that didn't get anything handed to him, he worked for it, and he got it.
You shouldn't judge the quality of your life until you've done everything in your capabilities to set things straight. And Nate lived by that, and now I will live by that.
We've been so inspired by him that we're planning to start a nonprofit called Nate's Place, a Center for Healing. It's going to be for at-risk teens and adults who are struggling either with mental health or addiction issues. And what we want to incorporate, which is missing from a lot of places, is like all the activities that are so healthy, like weightlifting, rock climbing, hiking, boxing, have recovery coaches. Nate was really into journaling and playing the guitar, so music, then having support groups.
His determination and ambition was contagious. Seeing him do good made you want to do good for yourself. He understood the importance of living each day like it's your last and the importance of doing what you love. He inspired so many people and still is even after he is gone. He was so special, a truly magnificent, extraordinary soul. It physically and mentally pains me to imagine a world where Nate isn't in it.
Proclamation. Whereas Nate Rhodes graduated from Nordoff High School in two thousand and nineteen, where he was the defensive captain of the football team. And whereas Nate overcame substance abuse and a premature birth to thrive, and in, and in his addiction recovery had the support of his parents, Larry and Heidi, and a recovery coach, Kyle, who understood such challenges from personal experience. And whereas, by the end of high school, Nate was a personal trainer at a local gym and spent hours encouraging other youth, especially those who had recently become sober, and was an inspiration to everyone who knew him. And whereas Nate Rhodes died in a car accident in January two thousand and twenty-two, following which his family agreed that Nate would want to donate his organs to help others. And furthermore, his family created Nate's Place, a wellness center that embodies peer mentoring for youth recovering from addictions. And whereas Nate's Place fills an urgent need because drug addiction has increased among local youth, peer mentoring can help break addiction in teens, and Ventura County has no treatment centers providing such service. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Betsy Styx, Mayor of the City of Ojai, and on behalf of the Ojai City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two as Nate Rhodes Tribute Day, and encourage all citizens of Ojai to support addiction recovery in Ojai and nationwide. Thank you. And just a word, thank you Larry and Heidi for being here, and thank you for opening this center, because now Ventura County does have a substance abuse center, and that's a beautiful thing, and so Nate's memory will live on forever. And especially, I love the focus on fitness and nature in terms of recovery, so that's a really beautiful thing, so thank you so much. Yeah. You want to come here? Oh. Oh, go up there.
You can say a couple of words first, though, please. Yeah, this is, right there at the mic.
Yeah, we just want to thank you all so much, this is like amazing, we have a lot of gratitude. And I know our son is smiling, you know, alongside this. And yeah, I guess the other thing is just, we're so excited, I mean, Nate passed away on January twenty-first, and most of the contacts that we've made have because, been because of Nate. You know, the Behavioral Health Addiction Clinic, the director knows someone who was good friends with Nate, and just doors have been opened. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and therapist, and I see in my practice, I also teach at Cal State, I see such a great need, especially since COVID, for substance use recovery for teens and young adults, as well as mental health. And we have a building, as of November first, we're going to be opening the doors the end of January, it's in Channel Islands, and it's at the Fisherman's Wharf. And we're so excited, we're going to be hiring peer recovery coaches this fall, and we have some flyers out there, we have our first huge, big fundraiser, and this is the concert. And ironically, Nate's peer recovery coach is now a reggae songwriter and performer, and he travels all over the country. So he's going to be performing along two good friends of Nate's who wrote songs. So anyway, but we just wanted to thank you so much, yeah, this really means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, well, we will move on to commission reports, any commission reports, James?
I do not believe we have any commission reports today, no, we do not.
All right, well, we'll move on to public communication, and just a reminder, these are items not on the agenda, and we have, normally, public comment is three minutes, and we'll hear a chime at the end as a gentle reminder. Please respect each other's time and stop talking when the chime sounds, thank you very much. All right, we will begin with Ron Solozano. Did I get it, Ron? Almost.
We get in our heads when we start thinking about the two options. Thank you, members of council, my name is Ron Solozano, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. I'm here tonight to talk with you about Ventura County Library's Fifth Annual One County, One Book Community Reading Program. One County, One Book aims to unite the Ventura County community around a common narrative. Throughout October and November, readers will have a chance to attend numerous special events related to the themes of the selection. One County, One Book is sponsored this year by the Ventura County Library Foundation. This year's selection is Taste Makers: Seven Immigrant Women Who Revolutionized Food in America by Mayuk Sen. Taste Makers was named Best Book of two thousand and twenty-one by NPR and is one of the Wall Street Journal's favorite books of two thousand and twenty-one. This debut work relates the stories of seven extraordinary women, all immigrants, who left an indelible mark on the way Americans eat today. From World War II to the present, the book includes deeply researched portraits of figures including Mexican-born Elena Zelaya, a blind chef, Marcela Hazan, the deity of Italian cuisine, and Norma Shirley, a champion of Jamaican dishes. One County, One Book culminates this year with a special event featuring Taste Makers author and NYU adjunct professor Mayuk Sen on Saturday, November twelfth, at California State University Channel Islands Grand Salon. In addition to the free event, the Ventura County Library Foundation is hosting Passports, a lively discussion with local food influencers at noon in the Grand Salon. A discussion of topics ranging from county food trends to local and worldwide food issues will be led by CAPS Media Executive Director Patrick Davidson. One County, One Book is further sponsored by Premier America Credit Union, the Ventura County Community College District, Ventura County star Cunejo Valley Lifestyle Magazine, Mustang Marketing, Montecito Bank and Trust, and the Ventura Friends of the Library. Additional partners include the Museum of Ventura County, California State University Channel Islands, and California Lutheran University. As part of One County, One Book, Cal Lutheran will present a panel of professors and alumni who will talk about the role of food in American history and culture. This event will take place in Cal Lutheran's Lundering Event Center at seven PM on Thursday, October twentieth. Readers can participate in One County, One Book by picking up a copy of Taste Makers from one of our library branches or our mobile library. Once you've read the book, you'll be ready for our October and November events. Visit www.vencolibrary.org/OCOB, or contact me directly for more information about this year's program. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Reno Rolé, and then we have Chet Hilgers, and then Melanie Hilgers.
My name is Reno Rolé. I've lived, voted, paid taxes, and raised my family here in Ojai for twenty years. I came to Ojai for a career opportunity back in two thousand and three, but it wasn't until the Thomas Fire in two thousand and seventeen that I finally understood why I loved this place so much. You see, during the Thomas Fire, Boku became something of a gathering place for our community. Our family was able to connect with so many neighbors who all shared the same fears and uncertainty during this unprecedented disaster. It was then with our backs against the wall, facing terrible adversity, that we saw the absolute best in people. We experienced acts of kindness and charity so profound that it impacted our lives forever. We fell in love with the people of Ojai. This, in my humble opinion, may be our single most precious resource. Perhaps as precious as water itself are the loving, compassionate, respectful, and law-abiding people that truly make Ojai what it is. There are sadly some very bad actors in Ojai as well. For many years, our leaders have been played like suckers, manipulated and corrupted by bullies and miscreants, leveraging their financial influence to plow their way through our town, forcing their selfish agendas down the throats of our good people. Their empty promises designed merely to distract us, so we don't see the true nature of their immoral intent. Well, the beast becomes the product of what you feed it. Years of selective interpretation and random enforcement of the code by city officials has created almost irreversible conflict and crippling inefficiency. It's no wonder intelligent people, perfectly capable of following instructions, dread showing up at the counter here in City Hall, where even pulling a simple permit is like pulling an abscess tooth. They'd rather chase you away confused with your tail between your legs than actually help you. What are they afraid of? What are they trying to hide? Why would they intentionally bury appeals forms and block the public's access to due process? Why would they issue and then rescind vested entitlements on a whim, as if they mean nothing to the people who work so hard to earn them? I've struggled for years to understand this, before recently coming to the painful realization that there's much more at work here than incompetence alone. While everyone talks about sustainability, this is not sustainable. This will ruin our town, this will destroy everything that makes this town so special. We can't just sit back and shake our heads anymore, we need to end this depravity before it ends us. Call me crazy, but I believe the good people of this town deserve more, much more.
Thank you, Reno. Next, we have Chet Hilgers, then Melanie Hilgers, then Cliff Hill.
Good evening, council, staff. I'm here to speak about the treatment of me and my family in regards to the non-enforcement of my conditional use permit and ADA by the city. My tenant has hired a city councilman. The problem for us is that, along with many other businesses, property owners, and renters, is where elected officials have created a system of directing city staff to either enforce or not enforce laws, codes, or permits. City government isn't working for the people, it's working for special interests. How can the mayor call a special meeting to create new rules regarding parking and then have zero enforcement of my CUP rules? I have no idea how the city attorney is able to keep track of all the different side deals. Meanwhile, you pass laws forbidding the use of certain gas-powered hand tools for people who can least afford to buy new equipment, making those same people pay for permits and threaten those people with fines if they don't comply. All this while some city council members trade favors or money in exchange for helping others in the community avoid following rules of any kind. That's bad. You threaten people if their fences are in the wrong place or their hedge is too tall. For those of you seeking reelection, it's not too late to turn it around. Your only special interest group should be the people who live in this community. Matt, you could write me a letter and nothing flat. Wouldn't that be the impartial thing to do? I've never seen the city so dysfunctional and divided. I thought I'd seen it all when building the skate park, which, by the way, none of you were here during that time. This is my conditional use permit, obtained in two thousand and thirteen. Prove to the community you want to be impartial, follow the law, and enforce my CUP and ADA law now. Early voting starts in October, Election Day is eight weeks away. At the next council meeting, I'll give the community an update. Until then, if there's anyone listening that's had problems with the city, please reach out to me.
Thank you, Chet. Next, we have Melanie Hilgers, then Cliff Hill, and then Wendy Hilgers.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I'd like to read a couple of letters to you this evening. On September sixth of this year, my attorney, Heath Feichelman, wrote this email to Lucas Seibert, copying Matt Summers and James Vega. HCD has recently made clear that enforcement of the CUP issued by the City of Ojai is solely the responsibility of the City of Ojai. Furthermore, pursuant to official guidance issued by HCD, HCD is not responsible for enforcing violation of Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, CHCD Information Bulletin Number two thousand and seventeen dash four, it's located on their website. This responsibility also rests with the City of Ojai. This would be a great opportunity for the city to act in an impartial manner. I understand that many in the community are already questioning whether the city is beholden to special interests, based on recent actions taken regarding the Boku's, Adamson's, El Roblars, Becker Groups, et cetera, properties with regard to zoning and rules. Indeed, I also understand that a member of the Planning Commission has even indicated that they believe the reason the city has chosen not to enforce the CUP here is due to a certain councilman. My clients again request that the city take the appropriate actions to enforce the existing CUP for Caravan Outpost and enforce applicable ADA requirements. Now, a letter from Kevin Hoopman of HCD, dated September first of this year. Good afternoon, Chet, I received your message with regards to the park operating outside the scope of the conditional use permit, CUP. The CUP and the conditions mandated by the CUP are under the jurisdiction of the local enforcement agency, LEA. That's you guys. When a park is first built, the LEA establishes how many spaces allowed, the land use restrictions, et cetera, and then issues a CUP based on those restrictions or guidelines. Once that is submitted to HCD, then HCD will issue a permit to operate, a PTO, with a number of spaces identified in the CUP. If the conditions of the park's CUP are ever violated, then the LEA has jurisdiction to take enforcement action. I hope this clears this up. Kevin Hoopman, Administrator Two Codes and Standards, Housing and Community Development. Yes, indeed, I hope this helps clear this up once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Next, we have Cliff Hill, then Wendy Hilgers, then Emmy Hilgers.
Hi. Hi. My name's Cliff Hill, and I've been a resident of Ojai for four years, I've been a visitor of Ojai for forty years, I've always loved this place, always thought that one day I'd live here. Well, here I am. Obviously, you can see that I am pretty seriously disabled, mostly due, I think, but not admitted by our government as a cause caused by Agent Orange, thank you very much, Vietnam. And getting around as a disabled person in this city, and I am out here every day, everybody in this room has seen me cruising this town. I'm everywhere, and I have seen kindness and generosity, and I have seen voracious attitude. I've had as many as nine cars pass in front of me in a crosswalk on Ojai Avenue, nine cars, and I'm sitting there in the crosswalk. People blow by you, ask somebody to open a restroom door, most of them will say yes, but every now and then you get that special guy who just doesn't want to do it. So that leads us back to this guy, this guy operating this thing called the outpost, nice place, really nice place. Chet, Melanie, kindest, some of the kindest people I've ever met, they're my friends. Chet asked me to go down there and try and rent a room. It's nice, it's real nice, there's a trailer parked there with a space next to it, all marked out in blue. I asked the young lady there, well, how am I supposed to get up in there? That's your problem. That's your problem. I said, well, maybe if you solve this problem, I can inundate this place with handicap business. Handicap people are looking for accommodation all over the seven-letter world. And that's all I want. I want this man to realize that he spent far more money fighting compliance than it would cost him to comply. And not only that, if he's worried about caring for handicapped people on his property, there are a dozen nursing agencies that would flock to his aid. Hey, Betty Sue, I got a, I got a new guest over here, he's not doing too well, can you come over and spend some time with, he says money's no issue, he's got the card. It's not that hard. It's not that hard to have a better world.
Thank you, Cliff. Next, we have Wendy Hilgers, then Emmy Hilgers, then Leonard Clave.
Hi. I'm here tonight speaking with you because this is the only place where my words will be heard and my family might be helped. My son, Chet, and his wife, Melanie, hold a conditional use permit for the operation of a business on their property on Bryant Street. Situations arose there which prompted Chet to try to resolve them by reaching out to the tenant, but then turning to the city regarding enforcement of the CUP. But that did not work, and he did not get that help. Instead, the past three years have been costly and frustrating to our family, while business goes on as usual at his property. What is the meaning of a conditional use permit if its conditions are not enforced? To us, to our family, it has no meaning at all, except that the city allows the tenant to just carry on with no concern about oversight, leaving Chet and Melanie with the liability. This has to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next, we have Emmy Hilgers, then Leonard Clave, and then Robin Gerbert.
Hello, everyone, I apologize for having to read off of my phone, but it was a bit last minute. Okay, first, I want to say thank you to all of the members of the council for your dedicated service to Ojai. My name is Emmy Hilgers, and that is my My name is Emmy Hilgers, and that is my dad, Chet, and my mom, Melanie, and my grandma, Wendy. My family moved to Ojai in 1968 when a freeze in Santa Cruz caused their flower business to crumble. Since then, they have proven themselves as pillars of the Ojai community. My family has done so much to help Ojai, from fundraising and building the Ojai Skate Park to building the beautiful outdoor amphitheater at San Antonio Elementary. Betsy, you came to us asking for support, and my family worked to gather many supporters for you. And maybe they weren't able to donate a lot of money, but in my opinion, what they gave was worth much more because the Hilgers stamp of approval means a lot here. My parents have been fighting this battle since I was your French class, was in your French class in high school. You have the ability, or should I say responsibility, to do something about it. You are someone I have always looked up to, and I remember at one point saying that I wanted you to be my personal life coach because of your wisdom, serene nature, and attention to truth. All my family wants is to be able to live their dream of once again running their small hotel, Caravan Outpost. They have helped support so many dreams in Ojai, including Betsy's to become mayor, and all I'm asking for is that Ojai will do the same for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmy. Next we had Leonard Clave, then Robin Gerber, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, everybody. Leonard Clave, 412 North Fulton Street. Before I start my remarks, I wanted to offer a tip of the hat to Nate's family. It can't be easy for them, having lost a child, to become public people in, in support of their son's legacy. So, thank you. I was here two weeks ago speaking about the cavalier, at best, way that the electric company treats our trees. And two days after that, an oak fell on the Fish Place in Miramonte. According to the Ojai Valley News, quote from an arborist, "It was caused because the tree had been topped." And if you drive down Highway 33 and you look to the left and you look to the right, you will see topped tree after topped tree after topped tree. And that's a good way to kill trees. We have extraordinarily fortunate that my wife has loved trees for the last however long she's been alive. We have 10 giant trees on our regular-sized lot in Ojai, and we don't need an air conditioner. Trees help the planet, help keep us alive and comfortable. Something needs to be done about what's being done to our trees in terms of their being topped. There's something, oh, the other thing about trees in Ojai is over the last few weeks, I have twice seen people cutting oak trees in Ojai. I don't know whether they're trimming them or cutting them down, but the truck that's working on it has no identification whatsoever. When I see a truck from Oscar's or Crane or any of the other Ojai businesses, I assume they have a permit and I assume they know what they're doing. When I see a truck without any identification whatsoever, I assume they're not licensed and they don't know what they're doing. So I would urge people, if you see a truck with no identification cutting oak trees, call the compliance officer at City Hall. I did that last week. I have no idea what happened or what the status was, but I'll do it again and hope to get some kind of results. But I don't know why you can't pass an ordinance. You're talking about doing something, passing an ordinance or revising the ordinances with that with respect to the electric company. Perhaps you can add something in there requiring tree trimmers to have signs on their trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Next, Robin Gerber, and then Larry Steingold.
Hi, I'm Robin Gerber. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to talk about good governance. We don't have a pure democracy. We have a representative form of government. We elect you to represent us rather than having everyone in town vote on every issue. We expect you to learn about the issues by reading the materials, the staff reports, and all the rest. Perhaps reach out to experts on things like water or fire. Talk to residents. Basically, do your homework. Then we expect you to show up at meetings, ready to listen to public comment and each other, to ask questions of staff or your colleagues, to deliberate, and then decide with your vote. That's it. Learn the issues, listen, deliberate, decide. But I am disturbed that at two recent sessions where two important issues were voted on, community grants and affordable housing, a member of council read pre-written statements with apparently pre-decided decisions and did not engage in substantive discussion. This does not show a command of the issues or a council member who is listening to the public or colleagues or deliberating. It shows a closed mind and a dismissal of new ideas that might just show up in meetings. This was especially true of the affordable housing debate where we had terrific comments from the public, and it was very enlightening. And colleagues, your colleagues on the council, worked very hard to bring something to the council, however much people might disagree with it. Going forward, I would just ask that every member of council now and when new members arrive show the respect of listening with an open mind and heart. People who show up to comment have put a lot, a lot into their comments. Give them the courtesy of consideration, and for the sake of representative government and democracy, engage in deliberation. Be open to shifting your opinion, even if you don't. Show us that you've done your homework by asking questions, by engaging in a robust debate on key issues before casting your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next we have Larry Steingold.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Larry Steingold, citizen, taxpayer, and thank you all for the rain, whichever there was. I'm sorry for your applause. Also, my wife's an occupational therapist, and we are, we are all temporarily abled. We will all become disabled at some point in time. Regarding water, has anybody contacted the Crown family and actually asked them to recycle water or take care of their groundwater or something like that? I don't know if anybody has. Maybe somebody at Casitas Water, but I think it's more important that somebody from Ojai, whether it's a committee or a group or one person, whatever, contact the Crown family and ask them. Because contacting management here is a waste of time because their budget and their profits are based on their income and their expenses. So please, contact Crown so we can get on with the water issue. Either we have too much water, we have primary water, we have subprime water, whatever it is. But everything seems to have come to a standstill around here because of water. So if they can produce more water, why doesn't somebody ask them? They have a huge philanthropy. The Crowns are worth, what, $20 billion? This is chump change, and they look good. They also have a philanthropy. And I believe it's James Crown and Pauline Crown. So either somebody here should do it officially or somebody out in the town or the city should do it. Otherwise, we're just barking up the wrong tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Larry, I can respond briefly to your comment. I do know that Deanna has just recently hired a major landscape architectural firm and that they are in the process right now of redesigning the entire golf course and turning it into, well, I'm not sure what they're going to turn it into. I can't use the word links because that's not the appropriate term to use, but I do know that there are going to be a major reduction in turf and a tremendous amount of money that they're going to be spending reducing their water consumption on site. I'm waiting for them to actually come out and let us know what it is, but I do know that they have just recently hired that, that golf course architect.
Thank you, Randy. Good news. Appreciate that. Yes. All right, we will move on to the consent.
If that's the last speaker, I do want to respond, if I may, to a couple of the comments.
Thank you, James.
Oh, okay.
Any, anyone on Zoom, Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who would like to speak on public comments, please use the raise hand function now.
No. James?
So I just wanted to respond briefly. Obviously, we are limited in what we are able to say about active code enforcement cases or code enforcement cases in general. But several comments raised concerns about code enforcement cases. Some of the cases discussed were years-long, complicated issues, so it's going to be, we aren't really able to get into a full debate of them or discussion of them at this meeting. But I do want to confirm that the, the city staff are, that I, that we stand by the planning and code enforcement programs. The code enforcement program works transparently and works in response to complaints that we receive and investigates and works on those appropriately. Anyone with concerns about those may contact myself or the Community Development Director, Lucas Seibert. And most of our, the decisions that were mentioned have been transparent decisions, have been, a lot of decisions that were mentioned, were, mentioned were made at public meetings and in compliance with the law. We stand for good governance and against corruption, so I just wanted to make those points.
Thank you, James. All right, we will move on to the consent calendar, motion.
I'd like to pull, excuse me, I'd like to pull Item G for discussion, separate discussion.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Move to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
A roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, and then Item G?
Yes. I have some questions about Item G. Excuse me. The funds in the 20, in the budget were for supporting arts programs, and the request of the commission is to reallocate funds for supportive arts programs to a consultant to be a trained facilitator to lead the Arts Commission in a discussion of strategic planning. I guess I have some questions because we, first of all, it's not the intended, that wasn't the intended purpose of the budget in the, in the first place. And second of all, I guess I have some questions where we, I think, put a fair amount of care, somewhat controversially at time, into choosing members of the commission to represent different parts of the arts community, to hopefully talk with one another and fulfill their responsibilities, one of which is their responsibilities in the ordinance, enabling ordinances for the commission to, every few years, look at a strategic plan. And I guess I'm just a little uncomfortable reallocating budget from supportive arts programs to basically a facilitator to help these people that we've appointed on the commission to talk with one another. I don't understand why they can't at least start a discussion with one another as different representatives of different parts of the arts community rather than bringing in a facilitator and spending money, $2,500, that could be used in support of arts programs in the community. So I want to raise that question and see if anybody else has some questions about this appropriation, change in the budget.
Oh, Mayor. Hey, I think you bring up a good point, although there's nobody here from the Arts Commission to talk about it. I think that's the problem. I, I would defer to whether they would prefer to spend, I mean, it's their budget. Do they, would they prefer as a commission to spend that money on strategic planning or strictly on the rest of the arts budget? I'd be curious to see what they have to say. I assume that would be an appropriate middle ground. I know that, you know, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody in the council. The public probably isn't as aware, but there has been some difficulty in their interpersonal communication, we'll call it, on the Arts Commission. So maybe that's what this is to facilitate. Was there, was this normal, James? Or was this something new this year because of things that have occurred?
So it's a couple of things. I think you hit on a couple, but so by, as Councilmember Wyrick mentioned, by city code, the Arts Commission is supposed to prepare a five-year strategic plan. They have not done it. It's several years overdue, so that's coming due. And it's coming due at a time where, as you just mentioned, there were several changes. We had, I, I want to say four new commissioners appointed in the last year to that commission. So there's a couple of elements where I understand, I think, we, you know, we kind of said, gave the same feedback that typically that funding is used to support the arts in the community. I think that the commission felt that there was value in creating that five-year strategic plan, value worth identifying some funding for it. What we can do is we can go back, bring the concerns that you just raised. I could ask the Chair of the Arts Commission to, to provide a response, and we can ask them to, we can, if, if it's all fine, we'll bring it back, or we can ask them to attend one of the upcoming meetings to speak to it, so.
And just, this was their request?
This is a request from the Arts Commission, yes.
And again, if I might make one other comment, there is, like, again, to me, it's a, a special concern. It said services would include gathering information individually from commissioners. These commissions are supposed to operate as a group, not have a facilitator come in and talk to them individually and then, you know, report on what they were all told individually. They're supposed to operate as a commission. And I just, I just have a concern.
Randy?
So I think the, it's interesting that this is on the agenda and that in the commission reports, we didn't have any commissioner from the Arts Commission come and at least speak to it. Yeah, I don't, I, we're taking $2,500 away from the community. That's how I look at it. And I don't, you know, I spent eight years on, on recreation and parks. We never had a, a planning session. We, we, we had to plan in-house. We had to make our decisions as, as a group on the commission. And that's what's nice about the bodies that we've appointed people to and how they deliberate, that it's public, you know? And as they're deliberating on what they choose to do and how they choose to do it, the public has an opportunity to come in and weigh in. If they, they do it privately, then the public has no vetting process. They have no opening until it's made, and then it's vetted. So one, I couldn't support the expenditure. Two, James, I think it was four in the last two years, if I remember correctly. But, so it's a new body, and I get that. In fact, I said, as I was listening to Councilman Wyrick, I was weighing the struggle of having almost a whole new group of people. But you know what? Every one of them is gifted. Every one of them is bright. Every one of them brings some unique aspect to the table. I think they just got to figure out how to, how to get along. It's no different than this body. I mean, we have our ups and downs, but the bottom line, the public expects us to sit up here and to conduct the business of the community in an open forum, listen. You know, one of the things I, a coach instilled me at, at Nordoff, the head coach there was, look, listen, and learn, and just interact with each other. So again, I'm not, I like to have them come. I like to have them really clearly explain to us what they need this for, and then I'd be more comfortable weighing in. But we allocated those funds to be given to members of the community, not to be used on ourselves or on themselves.
So for purposes of moving on, I'll just move to continue this item until we get further explanation.
Okay, and James, we?
I have a second, Deb.
Yep, we can do that.
Do we need a roll call on that, Gail?
I don't think we do. It's just no action to approve.
Yeah, consensus to continue is fine.
Okay, great. All right, we will, thank you very much. We will move on to the discussion. Item number two, the Community Disaster Guide. So I'm, just want to say I'm so excited to see this come to fruition, and a huge thank you to James Vega and city staff for making this happen. Robin Godfrey, much appreciated. James, you were told four years ago that it couldn't be done, and you did it. It's been a real honor to be involved in making this happen. Many stakeholders have been integrally involved throughout this process. So I just want to, big thank you to California Fire Save Council Co-Chair Bob Roper, Retired Ventura County Fire Chief John McNeil. Hi, John. Ventura County Fire, hi Barry. Ventura County Office of Emergency Services, Ojai Unified, the Humane Society, Ojai Valley Fire. Fire Save Council, Chief Rivera, Ojai Valley Amateur Radio Club, the Ojai Valley Community Hospital, County Supervisor Matt LeVere, and other stakeholders and community members for contributing to this plan. So this process has been a great example of community collaboration and teamwork. And tonight, we'll have the opportunity to review the document and make suggestions to the Disaster Council for their next meeting. And just a reminder that this is a living document, meaning that we will continue to build upon it and refine the great work that has been done to date. So, James, you have a presentation?
Can I, Mayor? Can I get clarification on what your just, your comment was as a living document?
Meaning that we will, the stakeholders will continue to add to it as we get more information, and I think James is going to explain that a little bit.
So, so then what's before us, just a draft? Is that what, is that what I'm to assume, that this is a draft?
You're asking, it's, it's, it's not intended, it's intended to be a draft for approval, to be a, for us to begin distribution, but we are publishing it electronically as a living document that can continue to be updated.
Yeah, because I have quite a few concerns in it, so.
Okay. Okay. So, let me start here.
And, and, and Mayor, also, please, if, if you'll allow James to do it, can you explain the, the hierarchy of this committee?
Okay.
And how it works? I know the mayor is the chair. And she just thanked a group of people, which I would thank also.
Yeah.
This is 14 months in the making. I know there's been a lot of time spent on it. I don't want to, I don't want anyone to, to not think that they haven't been working. But I just think it's, I think the public needs to understand how this works.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, and I can speak to that. The, I'll start with that, and then I'll go into the presentation. The city's Disaster Council by city code was created, and it's, the code identifies the mayor as the Chair of the Disaster Council and myself as Vice Chair of this, of the Disaster Council. And then an employee to be identified, or to be designated by me as the Assistant Vice Chair of the Disaster Council. So just from the hierarchical question, the only positions identified by code are the mayor as chair, city manager, vice chair, and a staff person as Assistant Vice Chair.
So, so any of these other elected officials are invited to participate? It's not mandatory that they participate?
Correct, correct. So we've, we've started with, with the idea that the, that, we always say it, especially when we talk about emergency preparedness, the idea that we are the whole of the donut and we are surrounded by county, and any disaster is likely to impact both the county and the city. We have tried to put a focus on working closely with the county and, and, and the other stakeholders, not just the county, but the county includes the fire department, the police department, the emergency services operations, the Humane Society, and then other stakeholders that are not county, as mentioned, include the school district, the hospital, the amateur radios operator club and those types of groups, Ojai Valley News as a media partner. So we've been trying to bring all of those groups into the process, and actually in the presentation, there's a couple of slides on that, too. But they are not by city code identified as members, like I said, it's just the, the three members that are identified as the Disaster Council. And so with that, I'll work through a quick presentation. The, for the, the Community Disaster Guide, one of the ideas with the Community Disaster Guide is trying to get the community more prepared, trying to explain to the community how we coordinate, how to get accurate local information, where to get accurate local information from, and just how to be better prepared for an emergency. The idea is if we are working with the community and doing all of those things, we are building trust with the community, we are helping the community to understand and be confident that, that its officials and representatives are, are working to be better prepared and, and with the focus on community preparedness, to make Ojai a safer place for all of us. The Community Disaster Guide, which is presented to council tonight, is an accessible, Ojai-focused digital and print document. What that means is we're going to do two things with this. We're going to publish it as a electronic document that can be updated at any time, and we'll be able to have that on websites. And when somebody clicks in, they will automatically get the most updated version of the document that reflects changes as, as things continue to evolve. But we'll also start the first phase of distributing print documents. And we had planned for this document to be distributed to residents, businesses, schools, and local hotels. So one, one of the plans, once this document's approved, is to literally print it and, and take copies out to each of those groups to help provide those to the community. And so we would be launching the first digital version and also taking out printed versions of those documents. The process, as mentioned, took 14 months. One of the reasons why it took 14 months is we've done a lot of outreach. We've had multiple meetings where we've gone out to talk to multiple stakeholders. We've done surveys and, and livestreamed public meetings to get feedback from the community. This maybe semi-complicated chart shows four of the, the major outreach approaches we took, and it shows the key groups and which workshops we worked with them at, or whether we contacted them directly. And I think for most of them, we did both, both of those things. And then we also incorporated this into the Disaster Council for the last few Disaster Council meetings and had several of the representatives there as well. And so a big part of the project was making sure we were hearing from all of those parties and making sure, from all those stakeholders, and making sure that they had the opportunity to provide real, meaningful feedback so that it wasn't the city just dictating how we think things should happen. It was us working with groups and really talking about how things will work when an emergency happens. I just mentioned that a lot of that was done at, at Disaster Council meetings. We also had, the flyer shown here on the left shows some of the community events we had. We had two meetings last month, for example, at Kent Hall, where we invited different groups and, and also the public in general to both of those meetings, to provide feedback and ask questions and, and give us input on what we may have missed. And so we had a series of stakeholder meetings, we had the Disaster Council meetings, we did the social media outreach, and then those final targeted meetings. So it's, a lot, a lot of work went into making sure we weren't leaving anybody out, making sure we were hearing concerns from everybody, because even at our last meeting, we had, you know, somebody showed up and asked a question we hadn't, hadn't heard before, and it made us realize we needed to, to keep focusing on, on hearing the community and providing responses to those, to those questions. What we learned from all of that outreach and from all the community conversations and all the feedback was, we heard from the community that they had a lot more, a lot of questions on more than just evacuation. When this started, we started with, Malibu had just adopted a 10-page evacuation guide, and we started originally saying we could do something like this for our community. And what we heard from a lot of people is they have so many more questions than just how to evacuate. There's questions along the lines of who does what in emergen, in an emergency? What do I need to do in an emergency? What, how can I be prepared? What do I need for my pets? What do I, you know, just all these questions that we heard. So it was a lot more than just evacuation, and that's why it's evolved into what we call a Community Disaster Guide. A lot of people had questions about how the city and county coordinate. There's a lot of confusion about who would make what decisions and how those would get communicated. I think there's, we heard a lot of questions about how the Ventura County Office of Emergency Services would coordinate with the city's Emergency Operations Center. So we tried to explain some of that in the guide and identify who's responsible for what types of things. I think a key thing for us was trying to get information out about where to get accurate local information. We saw in the Thomas Fire that there was a gap there, and when there's a gap, somebody's going to fill it with bad, inaccurate information, which we all saw. So we have a page in the guide telling people where to look when different disasters happen and how to get familiar with those sites and bookmark those sites or sign up for those sites now so that they're getting accurate information as soon as it happens. We also learned that, we heard from different members of the communities, of the community that have different accessibility requirements. So we learned that we needed to focus on making that electronic ADA accessible document so that different groups are able to, to read the information and, and get the information. And we learned, although we kind of, I think we've always known, but we really heard that with, that Ojai is unique in its geography and in its roads, it's, the level of engagement that we have, the amount of tourism that we have, and the types of animals and pets that we have, that the one-size-fits-all approach is, is very difficult in Ojai. And we tried to tailor the plan, or the Disaster Guide, to address some of those unique issues. And then one thing that I think was, that came out of the last session that we had, the last workshop, that was really enlightening, was the discussion from the Police and Fire Department about the need for people to be prepared individually and how if the community gets familiar with this information and is prepared, it will help Police and Fire focus on the people who truly need it and will help with all of the city's emergency preparation overall. So we, we had a series of meetings where we went, where we heard from the community, and those were some of the takeaways, which led to, in the guide, we have some specific areas that we focused on, including coordination with the public safety partners such as Police and Fire, providing links to important sources of information for both the city and the county, defining key terms, traffic control and evacuation routes, in addition to temporary refuge areas and shelters. We worked with the school district and the hospital to include some information for schools and healthcare information. We worked with the Humane Society to include animal evacuation information. And then we worked with the County Office of Emergency Services to prepare a emergency go, go-bag checklist. And so the guide has, as I said, it's intended to be kind of an overall disaster resource guide, so it focuses on that information, which can be applied kind of universally across different disasters in different locations. When we said living document earlier, we talked a little bit about this. The, kind of the next step, once the council approves the document, is, our next step is getting the word out that the document is available and getting it in people's hands and getting it on websites so it can be accessed. So as I mentioned, we will be doing that by having both an electronic ebook and print copies. We're going to take them out and distribute them at events like Ojai Day coming up, but also to businesses, hotels, and other community partners to try to get them out into the public. It's one, one tool, but it's not, you know, it's not that we're adopting this and we're done. There's a lot of work to do. One of the things that I mentioned a moment ago is the temporary refuge area. We worked really hard, and I think we're, I think the first city in the county to have this, is we were able to partner with Soul Park Golf Course and, and a thank you, a big thank you to them for working with us on it. But we're able to partner with them to get, to have the, the golf course identified as a temporary refuge area. But that's, and that was a, a big accomplishment. I think doing, doing the first one always takes a lot of time and effort and takes a while to build up momentum. But I think it's fair to say that there's more work that needs to be done, there's more sites that need to be identified and, and all of those things. So this guide is intended to go out and help people be prepared, but it's not intended to be the end. It's not intended, we're, our intent is not to say we're done now and we can relax. It's, now it's going to be, you know, what, what do we need to do next? And we heard that at the last workshop, there was a request from the community to do a, a drill, and that's something that we are going to push very hard to, to try to do a full drill with, with all of our partners. And so when we say it's a living document, one of the things we plan to do is update it quarterly as we start to develop some of these other ideas and have it be updated in the document. And so I think that is the end of the slideshow. So in a nutshell, that is what we've been doing the last 14 months. And as I said, we are at the point where the council can review and provide feedback, and the recommendation is to approve the guide and authorize staff to begin to distribute it, so. I can take any questions.
Thank you, James. Great teamwork, much appreciated. So let's do a round robin, so one at a time. Any questions from council?
I have some comments after, after public hearing.
Okay. Questions? No questions? Okay.
Okay, I have.
Oh, sorry, Susa, go ahead.
Oops, I lost it. Okay. Do you still hear me?
We could, yeah, we can hear and see you.
I, I, I lost the picture. I don't dare fool with it. You know, the more I think about this, and I've been thinking about it ever since I attended one of the meetings, what is the, the emergency plan for the tourists? You know, that's what I keep thinking is, is there something by, in every room that's, I mean, I'm sure that the, your, the guidebook must cover this, but it seems like that's a topic unto itself. Like, how do, if I'll say that a typical weekend, there's no vacancies, do we have a plan that, that the hotels tell all the tourists to go home? I mean, for some reason, I'm just fixated on that question.
Well, that's, that's the challenge to answer your question is, so there, there's never going to be just one plan, because it depends on what the emergency is, where it is, what time it happens, you know, all these factors. But the, the guide is intended to help everyone, including the tourists. As I said, we, we're, one of the things we would do is make sure that we get copies of these guides to the hotels. And I think one thing that I expect to hear is when people read the plan, there's going to be some things that people say are obvious. You know, where, where is our evacuation center? I think everybody in this room would say Nordoff. If you're a tourist and you're at the inn and somebody says, "Go to Nordoff," I don't know that you know where to go or what that is, or is it a high school, or is it the mountain, or, you know? And so there is stuff in this guide that is very basic, and then there's stuff that's a lot more complicated, and there's things that people maybe don't understand or don't know or have never thought about. So it was a challenge to really create a guide that we think can be used by either somebody who's never been here or, and happens to be here during an emergency, or somebody who's been here 20 years and maybe knows most of it, but, you know, hasn't ever thought about getting their pet's medication ready when they need to evacuate. So we tried to write it with all of those intent, intended, with the idea essentially of if you're a tourist and you're at, let's say, the Hummingbird Inn, and somebody says, "I heard there's a storm coming to Ojai tomorrow," and it's- and somebody says, "I heard there's a storm coming to Ojai tomorrow and it's pretty bad and it might be, there might be flooding", that somebody can go, "Okay, I think I saw, you know, an emergency guide in our hotel. Let me just read it and make sure, you know, it's, it's 10 pages" or I think it ended up being a little bit longer, 13 pages. So, I could skim through it real quick and make sure I just have the basics down, you know? And so, it's always hard to write these because you feel like you leave things out and everything, but that was really the, the vision of it, of trying to create that document that could be helpful to businesses, residents, visitors and all those things.
Thank you. So, I guess in a, in a real, in a, well, how can I say this? In a time-sensitive emergency, the city can dictate if it's safe for all the visitors to evacuate. That can be, what's the word, a mandate, so there's no, they don't have the choice. Is that correct?
Well, there's a partnership. We explained in the guide a little bit of how this works. It's collaboration with the city, county fire, county police, county emergency services, where we work together and we identify, okay, is it time where it's time to issue an evacuation notice? Is it time to close a road? Is it time to tell people to go to Nordoff or to go to the fairgrounds? So, it's really emergency-specific. But, we, we tried to explain in the guide basically how that works and what to look for so that somebody will know when it's happening. And like, just one point to that is we mentioned that we, the county sheriff has installed the new evacuation sirens. They're called high-low sirens that sound more like the European police sirens. And they've had those for about a year. We just had a workshop and when we played the video, a lot of people in the room said they had never heard them and didn't know what they meant. And so, we have that where somebody could click on that in the document and it'll play the sound so that they'll know what it sounds like. And that's an example of now somebody knows when they hear that siren, it means it's time to evacuate. Whereas, maybe they don't know that at this time. So, so the guide's trying to help provide that information. It won't, the guide does not just say, you know, if a fire happens, get out because that just depends on, you know, what type of emergency we're seeing and, and what needs to be done at that time.
Thank you. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Susa. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone on Zoom, Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand function now.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion.
Mayor Sticks, may I?
Sure, go ahead.
Great. This is, there's definitely great progress here. I've been involved literally over a period of years in these issues and some of the early discussions. And now, we're at a point of having a, something more operational that can be adopted. But, I still have a couple of concerns. And you've, you've touched on it, Mr. City Manager, in your presentation. Small concerns, larger concerns. One is to make sure that we are up to date on our technology of communications. One glaring example we still need work on is we have emergency AM broadcast. We don't have emergency FM broadcast. And one of the things that's come out of Q and A in our, in our sessions is that a lot of people don't have access to amplitude-modulated stations anymore. All there is is FM, newer cars, for example. So, you know, these are the kinds of things when you say, yes, things need to have quarterly updates, need to be changed. I'm not sure we're fully exploiting all of the, you know, up-to-date in terms of technology of the, of the communications. So, yes, it's a living document. That's an example of something that needs to be changed. A more profound issue I have is that we're still struggling, and I just want to be, make the public very clear on this. We're still struggling with the one-size-fits-all mentality. And you talked about this in terms of how much the Ojai community identifies the uniqueness of our geography, our limited roads, a lot of things. And yet, we are, found ourselves struggling particularly with, let's just be very explicit, Ventura County Office of Emergency Services that has simply stated, "Oh, well, you know, we like to have everybody be treated the same." We're not the same. We are more prone to a risk from gridlock than any other part of Ventura County, hands down, very clearly. And this is a, a real risk factor for evacuation orders that are not really fully thought through. Because the worst thing you want to have is have people put into a gridlock situation. We saw some of that in the Thomas Fire. It was very dangerous. And so, one of the issues I think we still need to resolve with Office of Emergency Services is that, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, is they seem to be reluctant to acknowledge that distinction, that special risk factor and the need to pre-position resources to handle support in areas of refuge or shelter in place for perhaps a longer durations than would be common in other parts of the county. And I, I'm, I'm very concerned that we're still not really on the same page with Office of Emergency Services in terms of them recognizing the special risk factors of our geography and topography here in the, in the Ojai Valley. And that shows up primarily in terms of, I know I heard them express reluctance to have support resources at these areas of refuge, at the Nordoff High School, at the temporary park, Soul Park. So, those are all accomplishments and incremental moves in the right direction, but I'm not sure we're quite where we need to be yet. That's my, my comment.
Thank you, Bill.
If I could, just, I, I think you hit on it. It's, we've made incremental progress. I think we're still working on it. You know, I mentioned in the presentation about trying to get some momentum going on that. Getting the, the first site, which is, and it's in the plan, I didn't go through it in detail, but the first temporary refuge area in the county is going, is potentially, because it depends on the emergency, but we now have an agreement where it potentially would be Soul Park Golf Course. And that was a lot of effort to get to that point. And I, I really appreciate all the partners' help in getting to that point. But, I think when we first started talking about this, we talked about having multiple sites and we talked about, you know, if something happens on this, you know, east side of town, having a site on the north end or the south end. So, that's something that we do need to keep working on because of our unique situation. So, that, that is a fair point that the work is not done on that, that portion.
And just a question, James. We had discussed getting some transistor radios and giving them out, you know, which would give people access. Okay.
But, we need to transmit on FM.
Randy?
I just wanted to get a clarification on what you just said, James. So, the, the governing body has to okay where we want to as a city dictate shelter in place. And that's what I just heard. So, we begged for 14 months to allow us to utilize Soul Park as a site and space that's open, fairly, fairly protected. So, why do we need their, why do we need their okay? Is it because they're going to staff it? Or, do we have the ability to create our own spaces if we are willing to staff them ourselves? So, for instance, I brought up the fact that it was in 92 or 93, 94 that, that earthquake that hit Los Angeles, it was six something or seven. It was huge. And people lived in the parks for almost three months because every time there was a tremor, there is an immediate evacuation out of their home or more, most of them were out of their apartments. I know I brought up the fact that we've got our grammar schools in our junior high, again, with large, open space that would allow us to accommodate their use during that event. I didn't see anything in here. Again, I know the school's given us Nordoff quotas are, it used to be the Red Cross Center. I don't know what it's called anymore because someone said the Red Cross doesn't, doesn't exist.
Evacuation site.
Yeah, so it's an evacuation site. But, so you see, I'm a little lost here. I feel like, I feel like part of us are, have to be controlled. And I understand that so that we know where all the moving parts are. But, I feel like our hands are tied if we want to make our own decisions regarding the safety of our own members, of our own community. And that's what we're lacking here is I don't, I don't understand that. So, maybe we, maybe you can get back to us on that. The other thing I looked at in here, and again, by the way, 14 months. There was a lot of dedication and hard work that went into this. I'm not gonna, I don't want to throw that out. What is that with the bath water, the baby? This baby with the bath water? I look at, I look at disaster preparedness differently. I look at it as preparation. What are you going to do in preparation? Then, what are you going to do during the actual earthquake? What are you going to do? What are we going to do? And then, the third part of it would be the evaluation of what occurred and how well we responded. If I remember correctly, as we came out of the Thomas Fire, the public thought we did a, just a horrible job. And to be honest with you, it was the first disaster I was ever involved with. And I didn't, to be honest with you, I didn't have a clue. I didn't know what to do other than what I was told to do and that it's not in our hands. It's in the county fire and the county police. So, and again, that's something the public needs to be educated on. The public is looking for us to lead and we're technically in the follow mode. We're in the follow seat. So, I have a couple more things, not right now, but as we go around, to talk about those three areas which are my concerns.
Can I respond to part, part of what you said? Just as far as, I think it is a question we'll hear from people of, you know, why does the city need permission, you know, to create that temporary refuge area? And I, there is a, there's a simple answer, which is we can identify a refuge area. Well, whenever we identify a refuge area, we're going to be working with the partners, Police and Fire and Public Safety. But, we can identify Libby Park or Serrzodi Park because those are our parks and we'd work with the police and the sheriffs, or the sheriff and the fire department to make sure that that's, the, the, you know, that we have good information, that those sites are safe and like, and all that, all that type of stuff. The reason why we, in particular on, on Soul Park Golf Course, needed the county's permission was because it's county property. And also, so there, there was kind of a few discussions with the county we had to have where first it was getting their permission because it was their property and then it was also working with all of the different public safety agencies to make sure that there wasn't some risk that we weren't seeing. And when I talk about like defining terms and why that's important, we actually found at one point, we had been having discussion for a couple of weeks early on and we kept saying Soul Park, Soul Park, Soul Park. And eventually, we said golf course and the county person we were talking to was like, "There's no golf course at the park", you know? And so, so that was where, again, we saw-
He's right. It's adjacent.
Yeah, yeah. We need to define terms because everybody in Ojai calls the golf court, course Soul Park and people know what you mean, you know? And so, so that was why, when I say that, we had to work with them. And likewise, we actually did recently meet with the school district and the school district was very receptive to the idea of starting to prepare some of the other school sites. I think that's something we can really move forward on very quickly because it was a really good conversation. But, so that, for example, wouldn't require the county's permission, so to speak, but it all requires coordination. We have to make sure that we're working with the County Office of Emergency Services, the fire department, the police department. Because when there's a, you know, earthquake, fire, whatever the disaster may be and they need to give an order to get people somewhere, we need to make sure they know, you know, they know that we've prepared some sites. Otherwise, it's not going to be on their list. So, so that's where it's just collaboration between the cities and the counties. And it is, it's tough when we're, when you're the first one to do something, you kind of have to start from scratch and think of all, you know, possible issues. So, doing the first one was a lot of effort. I, I'm hoping that we've kind of, we walked through all of those unique issues. We walked through the fact that there are, you know, two lanes in and out of town in certain directions and, and all of that. And so, the county really worked with us on Soul Park and we're, we're hoping we're able to keep that going. But, that's, that's why the first one took 14 months and that's why we're more optimistic about other opportunities.
Thank you, James. Ryan or Susa?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm, I'm really glad to see the progress that's been made. I know we've had a couple iterations of this. It's something I've been passionate about and I'm going to unfortunately be leaving office before. I think we have it totally dialed in. So, there's a couple of things I want to say. First, on the Soul Park part, there's a reason why it has gotten included and we're the first ones to do it because during the Thomas Fire, I know most of you already know, but not everybody out there might know, I opened Soul Park Golf Course because I happen to have the code. And there was people lined up along Ojai Avenue for a lengthy area on about day three when the fire came on the north side of town. It was on, you know, at the top of North Signal Street. And I couldn't believe how many cars and people were just out in the middle of the road on day three. And I thought, you know what? We're just going to roll the dice. We're going to open this up and see what happens. I've been pushing for that since the day I was in office. The first thing I did when James got hired was we asked for a meeting with Mr. Maynard over at OES at the County of Emergency Services. And this has been baked into at least some form of the plan ever since then. But, getting it official took a lot of work as well as some twisting of the arm of the operator of Soul Park just because of contractual stuff. But, he was more than supportive. I want to thank Keith again for all his support in the Thomas Fire. He was really fantastic. It's such a great resource and such a great place to be able to rally that what I realized from my experience in the Thomas Fire was that people panicked due to seeing stuff on Facebook. I said for a while, the most dangerous place you could be during the Thomas Fire was on Facebook for a lot of people. Unfortunately, you know, that's always going to be an issue and people are really scared. So, I went to Soul Park partly to take pictures to show people that where the fire was, wasn't near the post office. It wasn't near Vaughn's. And to try and get some depth perception of where things were. But, then I realized on day three, when I let people in, that it was an unbelievably safe spot for a bunch of different reasons. And I've been trying to get that incorporated into this plan, pounding the table. And I really appreciate that it finally is and I think it's a really important element. What we saw on day one was that people were freaking out, panicking and it was kind of like evacuate where? Just go that way as fast as you can. And that's not going to work in the future and it could have had some serious ramifications. So, this is kind of the, the, the moving forward with that ideology that was kind of how we were evacuating in town before. Mostly because, and rightfully so, we didn't know which direction to send anybody. So, this is really starting with, okay, how are we going to plan ahead and have some better ideas? And this is really, you know, step by step, we're getting to a much better place than where we were before, which was just wait till there's an emergency and we'll all point to which direction to go. So, the adding Soul Park to this, I think, is a really important deal, especially because on day one, there was another issue that I brought up, which was animals and animal evacuations. There were large trailers holding horses that were literally blocking roads and preventing the ingress egress of various cars, including at the gas stations. So, I'm really glad to see the animal evacuation information in here. I'm really glad to see Soul Park as a possible temporary refuge spot or I call it the bug in position before you get to your bug out position. But, I am still concerned about one thing, which was energy or gasoline or whether it's electric, whatever it might be at the time, especially if the Thomas Fire happens modernly and we have more and more electric vehicles in town. How are we going to provide the energy for people to be able to safely evacuate? You can tell them to evacuate, but if they can't leave in a vehicle, they're not leaving any other way. There's not a mass transportation mode of evacuation. There aren't buses. There aren't anything else. The limited aspect of that is ambulances that will come to the hospital and pick people up. But, they obviously have a very specific job. So, I'm concerned. We were very lucky. And one of the first things I did when I got to Soul Park during the fire was inform the firefighters that were down to the south of about the fifth hole where the power for the whole city comes in. They weren't aware that that was the main power line for the city and they immediately made- They weren't aware that that was the main power line for the city and they immediately made sure that they were doing their best to protect some of the wooden poles and other stuff. They've all been replaced to taller metal poles now. But to make sure we kept power as long as we could. But that's a very precarious situation, especially if you have an earthquake or some other type of disaster. So we've got to start making that planning as well because it's easy to say, yeah, leave. But if you don't have a mechanism to leave and we don't have a policy in place to either recharge a vehicle or to be able to get gas, we had people that owned gas stations leave town and turn the electric off on the pump when they left. So I, I, I just don't want to see people stuck here. And that's why I thought, man, if we're going to have potentially combining problems like electricity's gone or I want to, I'm supposed to evacuate, but I don't have the, I don't have a vehicle that can get me out of town safely, then where can they go to be safe while they're inside the, kind of the corners of the city? And that's why I think Soul Park is important and, and, and as many different, you know, possible locations in case that occurs. Also, we want people to rally and be able to orderly leave, not just say, everybody out. That doesn't work in a community where we have three exits on small roads and could be putting people in harms way. And from paradise and what possibly could have happened here, the fire did overtake the thirty-three, which was the main evacuation route. That could have been a real, real issue. So some of this stems from all of that and I like the progress we're here, but I'm going to make some comments. So this, this is a PowerPoint presentation printed out. If there is an emergency, and I'm going to the computer, I have this somewhere. This is a lot of useless information. I mean, I don't really, you know, if there's an emergency, the introduction. If either there's an emergency, where to, I mean, there's got to be maybe just at least one page or a separate cut sheet that is the checklist of information, that is the one page that I have that I can get my hands on, rather than reading about how wonderful all these organizations are when the time comes. This is not a report on the emergency. This is supposed to be the, the Bible, the booklet for the emergency. And, and I think it's, it's, this is in the form of what we see a lot as reports from the city. But this isn't in the, this is what I want to have, you know, in, in three different places in my house or in the car and at my office. We need something that's a little more boiled down to use that. I also wrote down a note that was right along with where you, you were at, Councilmember Haney, that I think there's a before emergency and a during slash after emergency timeline that people need to know. The before is download the app, do the preparation. I love the checklist of what your, you know, what your emergency evacuation bag should have, your bug out bag, all those things it should have. But it should be pretty clear, like, hey, before there's an emergency, these are the things we're asking you consider doing. You know, not only get aware of the plans, download the app, but like I said, do the booklet, understand your evacuation routes, deal with having a bug out bag for your animals there, you know, all, all those little things that are kind of before. And then during, well, I know we have three different phases, kind of the warning, the middle warning, what do I say here? The evacuation warning and the evacuation order. But none of those make it real clear exactly when you go to the temporary refuge site or if you're going to shelter in place, like it was called shelter in place, but that's not really when you'd be going to Soul Park. Maybe it is. I don't know if that's going to be tucked into the orders, but I'd like to see something that's just a little simpler to read. Because you can imagine, I mean, the panic, the, the motion, everything that's going on at the time of emergency and you're trying to read through this prose. I just, I think it's great for explaining how we got here, but I don't think it's great for having that really usable format that we kind of need given the situation. And I like to make it clear in those areas, like when, when should you be considering the temporary refuge site as an option? And, and maybe it's more obvious than I think, but I know that usually those, those OES orders are coming out on your phone. It's buzzing real loud and it's like mandatory evacuation if you're in these areas. You know, and then maybe there's a subset that maybe says something about Soul Park or these other areas. But I don't know exactly how that's going to come out. We don't control that, going back what you were saying, Shane. That's all the county emergency services stuff. So I, I think that, I mean, the, the really important things that I've been crying myself to sleep about not being in here are finally here. So I'm really happy. I think you guys did a wonderful job of getting those in here. But I do think we need a little bit more workable format. And I'm sure there's other things inside of those ideas that could be, you know, closer to that punch list. And maybe it's the last page on here, maybe it's a separate cut sheet. I don't think it's, you know, overly complicating it. And lastly, like, the only other thing I'd say is like the map and some of this other stuff. Let's presume that if it is something that is printed out by the public, let's make sure it's optimized for being in black and white. And then depending on whether that cut sheet's different, maybe some of this stuff is moved up to the front. Like I said, if it's a, if it's an emergency and the first page I get to is introduction, I want to, you know, I'm punching the wall. But if, you know, maybe, maybe it's on the first page or a separate thing, but let's try and put it in a couple of spots so that just like the okay signs had, you know, punch list items. And that was the other thing I had a question on, like that was the standard for how we dealt with emergencies. Is that incorporated at all into any of this? Those, so there, so for a long time in Ojai, right? The, and it was the disaster council, I believe, who did it, handed out these yellow signs. I, most of our, my brethren of Ojai would probably know. There, there were, they had big okay on one side. And they, the, the idea was if there was an emergency, you would put it in your window. And then if somebody was driving by or your neighbors or anybody wanted to know, they could see it and it was an added way to make sure they knew you were safe. And then on the back, it had like the AM station. It had other things. I didn't see them used almost at all in the Thomas fire, but I know they exist and I put it in my window, but.
I've heard about those. I think what I had heard when we looked into it, I, I believe that was CERT.
Oh, CERT, you're right.
CERT that did that.
Yes.
And that is part of, when we talk about trying to get partners involved and getting, getting partners to take leads on some of these things. One of the things we've done is worked with, CERT now is under Supervisor LeVere's office. So we've been working to try to really let them know that CERT works really well in Ojai and we really want to see it back in Ojai. So that's definitely on our to-do list.
Is that a county, is that a county agency?
So it's, it's now been assigned and I don't know exactly if it's the board of supervisors who assign it or what have you.
Citizens Emergency Response Team?
I think it's Community Emergency Response Team.
Just so the public knows.
It was assigned to Supervisor LeVere's office and, and one of the people in his office now is, is, has started to have meetings. We had them at Ojai Day last year to start giving information to get people to sign up. Because that's also, one of the questions we got a lot during this process was what happened to the phone trees and everything? And that's also a CERT function. So we, we, we will continue to try to get those going. To speak to your other point though, we had talked about having like either a tear out or something that was like the checklist. And so we could look at kind of putting a couple of these ideas together and putting a, maybe the back page has the really simple checklist and the okay or something, you know, on.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a perfect answer, but looking through this, I was like, okay, if this was, you know, the other thing I'd highly recommend that if it's a, if it's a document to be used in an important situation, not having it be landscape, having it be portrait would probably be beneficial. You can imagine, these are situations where we're talking about high super stress and who knows what's going on. There's a reason all the okay signs were laminated before they were given out to everyone. I don't know if it's something we'd consider about maybe having a stockpile of, if those cut sheets end up working, maybe we laminate some and get them to the public when we get a chance. And then we can't necessarily mail one to everybody, but handing them out at Ojai Day and things like that. Obviously, if it carries that laminated weight, it carries a little bit more weight on where you're going to put it, things like that. You know, I, I, all these things are so important. I'd be inclined to, you know, whether it's magnets on the refrigerator or any other marketing stuff and including it, you know, as an insert into the newspaper, even if it's just a one-page cut sheet. Anything that we can get it out to more people. Because I think there's some really great stuff here and we learned a lot in the Thomas fire. But James, you know this, it's been, it's been much more difficult than I ever imagined trying to really, you know, the Soul Park idea, I'll be honest. I don't think I could, I don't think it would have gotten approved, except it was kind of like, I did it. So you guys can't tell me it won't work. You just can't tell me it won't work, like, and that, and that's been kind of a difficult one. It wasn't optimal, but I know how important it played. And then, I mean, that morning, everybody got up, they got back in their cars, they left orderly. There wasn't one damage done to any property. Nobody had to ask anybody to leave. It all went very seamlessly because we have a great public and giving them the resources to be safe, I think is important. But, you know, if you have a large animal evacuation trailer and you can't get anywhere else, at least potentially those locations are places you could go and then figure out, because the last thing you want to do is have a, you know, eight-horse trailer on a road that's gridlocked for four hours because there's a fire that's overtaking it. I, I, there's a lot of situations where we have to think a little differently for all those unique aspects of our valley. So thank you, thank you, Mr. McNeil. Thank you to everyone who worked on this. I really think it's the right step and it'll always be a living document. I'd like to see some of those changes, but, but thank you for getting some of the things that are dear to my heart included in this finally. And thank you, Mayor, for all the work you put into it as well.
So Mayor, can I touch on that CERT?
Can I see if Suzie wants to speak first? Yep. Suzie, do you want to say anything?
I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just, again, I want to get back to, to governance, which I, I struggle with in this process. Once again, I've heard that Matt LeVere's office is going to quote manage CERT. And, and my take on this, especially with the, the districting that's taking place in this community, I would think that every person who wins their election, the first thing they're going to do is create a community emergency response team in their district. That's the first thing I'm going to do if I win. And I'm going to put together a team and we're going to create our own little environment where we do put our own signs up, where we do talk about how we can be prepared, where we do take a proactive take on being prepared in the event of an emergency. And, and I would also think that, that instead of going onto an app and going doo 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 doo, doo 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 doo, that we do a rotational basis on these districts. We've got four districts. Do you realize that if we just did, did a CERT in each district and went around, that would be three times a year, that we could actually have people putting placards in their windows? It's three times a year that we're started thinking about not of ourselves, but thinking about our neighbor across the street who's eighty-seven years old and alone and can't get out of her home. So there's more to this than, than, than this in the preparation side. That's my take. And then I think the other part of this is who would lead this CERT training? I think it's the mayor's position. The mayor's elected by everyone in this community. Districts are elected now by what's in their district. But the future mayor, whether, whether whoever it is in any time, should be the person that's, that's the CERT representative for our community and is actually taking the lead, rather than us putting another hat on the city manager's job, you know, resume or making, requiring you to budget for someone to actually do this. So I think in the, in being prepara- being more prepared, that as a district now, which is what we're heading into, that we need to be thinking like that. Because as we are in a district, we're going to be looking at things differently. For the first time, a group of people are going to have one person that they can actually go to and talk to and bring to their, to that individual their immediate needs and concerns and expect that person to take it to the dais. And that's the win in it. That's the good I see in it. Now, how we split the money, that's another story. But, but I do know that access is, is critical. And I do know that being prepared is, is almost more important than what you do during. Because my experience during the Thomas fire and this community's experience wasn't good. We're driving down streets that had been closed that no one knew they were closed. We were driving down thirty-three with flames leaping down the side of the hill where you could touch them with, you know, if you rolled your window down. There was just things that occurred that, that I know in an emergency, it's fluid and I know that there's a lot of moving parts. But we were not prepared. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, if I asked anyone that sat on this committee, you know, tell me how more prepared we are today than we were three years ago. And when I say that, I say it, I want to say that in a good way because that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure that we are more prepared. I think the app on, on here, if I, if I had to say, how are we more prepared? That's the first thing I would say, that I think we've, we, we have better communication. Do we have a backup to the AM? Not sure if we do. So if, if the tower goes down like it did in Thomas, we had no way, we had no way of communicating. In fact, if I remember correctly, the communication that most of the people that I know and a lot of the people in Ojai that I don't know, we were getting it from a young man in Washington DC. And he in turn knew more about what was going on in Ojai than we did in that moment. And so, so like I said, I think there's a lot of good things here, but I think collectively that we need to be, we need to focus more on being more prepared. This kit that we're supposed to put together, if you're doing your own district CERT, part of that group is going to go around and help people put these kits together. And when you do your CERT day, that group is going to go around and make sure that, that you're prepared. I just, I, I see, I see a humongous win in that. And then in the during process, we've got to rely on, on police and fire. There's no way out of it. I think in the event of an earthquake, that we need to do more with our school board. We need to do more. Again, I keep asking for a joint session. This would be a great topic. How can we best utilize the resources in our community in the event of, of an emergency or a disaster? And let them contribute. They're, they live here. They eat and sleep here. They want to be part of the solution. And then I think the most important thing is we got to do, we got to be structured, a structured evaluation when it's all said and done. What we do, how we did it, what were our successes, what were our failures, what can we learn from and what, how can we improve? So again, figuring out how to maybe put that in here, you know, and I'm not sure how you do an evaluation of something that's fluid, but I'm sure that there's things that we could identify. What we, did we do well and what we could do better? But again, I think this is, I, I think this is good work, but I think there's more here. I think we need, we have a lot more to do.
Thank you.
Can I give the city council some credit real quick as far as one thing that Councilmember Haney mentioned is the city council did demand a backup AM broadcaster after the Thomas fire. So we, we did purchase one and have it ready to go installed. So I just wanted to speak to that because I know that is, the first domino that fell on the Thomas fire was the AM radio tower went down immediately and then the cell phone towers went down. And, you know, in the plan, we, we speak to, that could happen again. And if that happens, we are not, are, we are planning to have wooden boards that we would take out to keep sites in Ojai and paste pieces of pa- or, you know, glue pieces of paper to, which was not something we did during the Thomas fire and we heard from the community afterwards that, you know, that's something that we've done in the past. So the, one of the things we tried to do in this guide was make sure we document those things because even for us, it's a whole new city team in those five years. It's a whole new, you know, a new police chief, a new fire chief, a new county EOC lead. So we're, part of the, this guide has a lot of things we're trying to do, but one of them is make sure we document these things so that it's not just one person left and we lost that knowledge and that process.
You know, one of the other things with the district CERT program is it allow, actually allows us to interact closely with the school and the school board properties because each of us is going to have a public school pretty much available in our districts, one way or the other. So there's an opportunity here, again, for us to create some safety. You know, in some situations, not in all, but in some.
Thank you, Randy. And I just want to say thank you to my council members for astute contributions and additions. And just, James, when is the next disaster council meeting, when we could?
So it's the, I think it's the last week. We just had one last week of August, I believe. And we do them every three months because we're doing them quarterly now. So it'd be the last week of November.
Okay, so that will give us the opportunity to add some of these and just, you know, great suggestions about the FM radio and areas of refuge. The electric car is a good point, putting this more into a brochure form. The CERT, yes, let's definitely get on that. Can we get Brian Brennan to come and?
Yeah, well, I think we can, hearing the, the CERT is a key thing. We'll ask, we'll ask Supervisor LeVere's office to do a presentation on that.
Okay.
You know, also Mayor, also, I'm sorry, but you know, where I got it is Rancho Matilla does it. Those parents do it. We don't necessarily, again, I'm, I'm not saying Brian can't help us, but I'm just saying there's other entities that are doing it. How do they do it and what are their successes and what are their failures that we can reach out to them and, and, and ask how they do it?
Sure. And just, my goal is for us to have a simple and easy to use disaster and evacuation guide and get it printed and online as soon as possible. and get it printed and online as soon as possible so community members and visitors can use that during disaster and evacuation. And the beauty of this document that I love is it is a living document. And so as we're getting all these great ideas, we can continue to add to it. I just think it's incredible that we have it finally. So that's a, that's a big move forward. And we do have John McNeil back there and Barry Parker. Just in terms of the question, how are we more prepared? I don't want to put you on the spot, but did you want to address anything or? Thank you, Barry.
Good evening, council. Appreciate all the dialogue so far, very valid questions, valid concerns. But are we more prepared? And to the end, it is, the answer is yes. We have learned a lot from the Thomas fire. I think each and every one of us has taken something away, thought about it, really meditated on it, and asked ourselves, what can we do better? So obviously, the city, all of you sitting here have done that. You've done it well. We're looking for, what are the best practices for good government? And how do we implement that for the public's safety? And so by putting together this disaster plan that you have in front of you, implementing change is what we're looking for. So how do we preserve life? How do we preserve property and the environment? By making people actually look and face fear, which is very uncomfortable. So it's a topic that does make us uncomfortable when we start to think about the loss of any of those items. So as we've gone through this and we've identified specifically, what are the priorities? How do we get people out safely? How do we shelter people safely? And one other piece that we haven't talked about is how do we get people back home? That repopulation is just as important as it is to get people out. So what has gotten better, you're asking? We take a systematic approach with evacuations. So we use, we draw these polygrams. We work with the sheriff's department and OES. And we identify areas that truly have evacuation orders, meaning that people need to get out. Systematically, we'll have warnings. So what we want to do is we want to have a nice ebb and flow of traffic out of the valley, of evacuations out of the valley. So we want people to escape, if you will, but to do it safely. And they need to know how. So we specifically direct people to vcalerts or vcemergency.com where they can open up an active map that actually shows the evacuations, specifically on a map. Even if you're not from Ojai, you might not know Noroff Ridge from Noroff High School. But you can look on a map and you can see where you're at. So what we want to do is we want people to be calm. We want to quell the fear so that they can evacuate safely. Other things that we've done is we've identified, there are actually seven different temporary evacuation points throughout the county. Obviously, one is right here in Ojai. But it's now on a map. So when people look at that map, they can see TEP. And they might wonder, what is TEP? Well, it's defined as a temporary evacuation point. So, James, thank you for the collaboration on Soul Park and Councilmember Blatz as well. Because you are putting your constituents first. And that's much appreciated. Another item is, you know, from the fire service side of it, of course, you know, we can stack 50 fire engines up high and that doesn't stop the wind from blowing. But what we do have is, we use, we have a lot more intel now, real-time data that we use. We have a fire ship that flies around above a fire and gives us real-time data. And that data is shared immediately with the different stakeholders in the city of Ojai. So because we're getting that real-time data and we're sharing and we're collaborating, we can make things happen faster, smoother, and more efficiently for the public. So when you look at where we've gotten from, 2017, 2022, major strides. And it's through that relationships and collaboration.
Thank you, Barry. Great news. Much appreciated. And we really appreciate your calm demeanor, too. Brian?
So I just met in Oakview Advisory Commission meeting yesterday with Matt LeVere. So the CERT training date is set for when it will start. And that will be at Oakview Park and Resource Center. It's in the next few weeks. So just to let you know on that, again, something Matt announced yesterday. The other thing is that he announced is Brian Brennan is looking to retire. So not completely kind of a step going forward. So just thought I'd check that.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments from council? I'm ready to make a motion to approve the disaster council. I mean, guides, sorry.
Could we, friendly amendment, maybe we approve it as version one, subject to quarterly update?
It's a working document. Yep.
Okay. I will second that with that amendment.
Okay, great. Roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Pransina?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes, and I want to apologize for Robin for another big workload being laid on you. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Sure.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yeah, I just want to say, keep, you know, let's make it clear that this is an ongoing effort. We want to see some improvements. But let's get this thing out of the gate and keep it cooking. So that's a yes with excited to keep helping any way I can.
Great. All right, wonderful. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll be back. Okay, we're going to come back. Okay, we are going to move on to item number three, the proposed local downtown historic district, the status update and historic preservation commission recommendations. James, we have a staff report?
Yeah, well, we have a brief staff report. And I'm going to ask our community development director to give that staff report as he's been working with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. My name is Lucas Cybert, Community Development Director with the city of Ojai. The city held a joint meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission on January 18th of this year and discussed the possibility of exploring further the formation of a local downtown historic district and agreed to provide progress reports and future recommendations. You know, since then, HPC has been monthly to discuss internal progress with the newly created adhocs. Two in total, one consisting of Chair Akins and Vice Chair Convery, the other ad hoc consisting of Commissioners Preborn and McHatten. Each ad hoc has provided updates on the matters during the monthly HPC meetings. In that time, the HPC has begun to accept votes from property owners within the proposed district. At the time of the report, the city received two votes in favor and has seen one opposed. Since the release of the report, that's, that the city has received two additional votes in favor. So that brings a total to four in favor, one opposed. The item is not before the city council because the Historic Preservation Commission voted in June to send three recommendations to city council for consideration. They are, in no particular order, one, decide if the city as property owner wishes to vote now or later on the formation of a local downtown Ojai historic district. That's really the nomination form. That was a part of the attachments. Two, consider exempting contributing sites in the proposed local downtown historic district from the historic resources report and processing fee requirements when the owners of these contributing sites propose to Mills Act their property. And three, consider directing staff to facilitate a future joint HPC PC meeting, Planning Commission, to discuss streamlining processes and removing barriers within a local downtown historic district. Now, also, independent of the HPC recommendations, independent, those are the three that they've discussed in June, the council could provide feedback on the voting process as some property owners have expressed concern with the process of one vote per property owner and have requested the city allow one vote per parcel with no maximum per entity. Staff has also received questions from the property owners about how long the process will be and when they will know whether it is proceeding. There is no set date or timeframe or timeline for this process within the code currently. So the city council may want to consider whether they identify a timeline or allow for vote gathering indemnity. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Lucas. Any questions from council?
Make sure I understand or my memory is working, that to change the process of voting would be a code change.
Correct, in ordnance.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one quick, I sure wish you would have included your last two caveats in our report.
They are in the report. They're just buried within.
In our bullet points?
They're not, yeah, they're not specific bullet points.
Yeah, we should have made them clearer. We apologize. We wanted to include those because those are the questions, the common questions we're getting. But we could have made it clearer.
So the fourth bullet point is changing procedures.
It's a question for council. It's, the public has called us and asked about why the votes are one per property owner and not simply one per property, whether that's intentional, whether that was an oversight, whether that's something the city would consider changing. And then as to that second question, we get calls from residents asking, how long until I know if this property is going to be landmarked? And right now, the answer is, you'll know when you know. And so some of them have asked for more certainty than that.
The question is that we don't have a date certain on this poll.
Correct. Correct.
Another point that would be worth noting, if I could jump in briefly, is the current system of one vote per parcel with a max of one vote per property owner, if an owner owns multiple parcels, was a conscious choice by mostly a current slash prior council in response to situations that arose during the Taramina Historic District formation. So it was a conscious choice. It's a conscious choice by council that can be changed to be a different conscious choice. That too would be code amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any public comments on this item?
Sorry. If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who would like to speak on this item, please use the raised hand function now.
Thank you, Gail. All right, let's move on to discussion. Randy?
I'll just start it out. To me, it's pretty simple. I don't know why we're even considering any of this until we know how the districts, how the parcels in the district are voting. I mean, it seems like we're putting the cart ahead of the horse here. You know, why would we make all these decisions? We don't know, you know, what if it comes out, right now we're four to two? What if it comes out against it? Why are we spinning our wheels? Why don't we just wait until the vote? Why don't we do anything tonight? Let's put a date certain that this poll gets done and taken care of. That's my input.
Ryan?
I've never heard of election without a date. So I kind of went there, Andy. I mean, I say we, I mean, this thing's been floating along forever. I don't know what is the problem with only having, what, four or five votes so far? I'd be willing to just say, let's put a date on it and figure it out then. I don't know. November 1st, Election Day? Let's not make it the same date as the rest of the elections?
Bill?
Yeah, I, you know, we delegated to the Historic Resources Commission to educate the public.
the public, seems like, are we the property owner universe, the set of property owners? I think they've been educated, they've done a lot of work. Let's set a date. A deadline date.
Brian? We did have public comment.
But I'm not publicly...
Okay.
I'm the presenter, I'm the applicant.
Okay. How's now? It's good?
Yeah, house down.
And I'll note, there is no formal applicant yet, so, not yet.
Okay, anyway... I'm not public comment yet, either, so...
So, wait a second, Brian, you need to clarify what you just said. What are you?
I'm the one that's...
An advocate for this?
I am.
Okay.
I am.
Then that's what you should state.
Okay, I am an advocate for this, okay. So, thank you. So, I am coming to you, just like I would any other group that has, owns a parcel. The city, in fact, owns seven parcels, six of which are landmarks, the Ojai Valley Museum, the city parking lot rock wall, the Ojai Arcade, the Libby Park, Sycamore Tree, Libby Park itself, the Ojai Valley Tennis Court, and the one that's not a landmark is the Ojai Pergola. So, when I, there, so, right now, there's two things, all I'm asking, I'm not asking for, I am not asking for any of the questions you asked for right in your discussion, I am asking you, as a parcel owner, and sharing with you the reasons why I think you should vote yes on this. Again, same thing I do with the twenty-something other people I've done, you saw Lenny Clafe here tonight, I have talked to, I first talked to Lenny, it was just before a meeting, and I waited another month, I did a presentation, I waited another month, I gave him an update, they were going to vote, they said they weren't gonna vote, because Lenny wanted to come to the meeting and see what's going on firsthand. So, again, why should the, so, you're voting for one of the parcels? Again, we have seventy-six parcels, we have fifty-six individual parcel owners, so, again, you're talking about, well, we'll get to the questions you have. So, one of the benefits, people are like, "Well, what's in it for me?", and that's when we discuss the Mills Act. If you looked in the July 12th meeting, again, I first brought this up, why is this taking so long? I first brought this up June 14th, I was then placed on the June 12th agenda. Matt and I knew about 5:15, that I wasn't gonna be speaking that night, because that was the five hours' worth of public comment, and then I've been waiting for two months to get back on the council, and I thank those that put me on tonight. So, that's kinda how the progress has gone. It takes a long time, at times, because people are busy. I just spoke two weeks ago with the Women's Club, they had been off for the summer, I made a presentation to them, after I left, they took a vote and said yes. So, that went quickly. I talked to the county people, because they owned the parcel for the library, I talked to Ron Salarsino, they were the first people I talked to, in talking about the friends, then it passed off to the county librarian, Nancy Schramm, then it passed off eventually to the, to Mount Leveer's office, that took about three and a half months for that to take place. It's, it's, people ask me, "How long are you gonna, you gonna do this?", and I tell people, "The day, until the day before my wife divorces me."
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Well, I think we're gonna help you out with that tonight.
Hey, Randy, I'm speaking. So, what I'm hearing is that, from my three council members, and Souza, jump in, is that we wanna set a date for a vote. Out of the fifty-six, you've had five, I mean, in the report, it said three, but now you've had five?
So, currently, currently, there are four people who have signed the form.
Okay.
There is one no vote, that is not on the form, that was a letter that was put in, that was something that went to James, June 27th, I just found out about it this last week. I happen to know the individual personally, it was a no vote, that was based on a lack of information, so I called him this afternoon to set up that appointment. As for the setting the timeframe...
Let's, well, let's discuss it with council. So, council, council members, is there a specific date in mind, or?
I just think it makes sense to make it Election Day. I don't know how much time everybody needs, but this has been going on for a while, that would seemingly make sense, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, and in terms of staff, James, does that work?
We can vote, we can vote whenever everybody's ready, I mean, I'm prepared to vote on the Historic District as a city.
And then, I think the idea would be, report back on it shortly after, and then, at that point, council would decide if and whether, or whether to vote, and what the next steps would be.
Yeah, I think it's really important to get more feedback from all the voters, right? So, confirm?
May I ask a question?
Well, I just wanted to say to Brian, I wanted to acknowledge what you, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been four months, is about what I heard for you to, from the start to where we are. So, that's four months of education. And when was this completed? And when was this completed?
That was April, or April 22nd, I think it's on the report.
So...
We began sometime after that.
So, you have sent this around to every parcel owner?
No, no, I do not, so...
And why haven't we done it that way?
So, when a parcel takes, when, so we have a list of parcels, information that we, it took quite a, quite a while, in order to get the information, we get the, again, we're treated as though we're a third party, to get the information for the, from the county to us, to then figuring out who the parcel owner is. So, that, that takes a while.
Well, I'm just, so the...
So, what I do is, then, I have a list, I go through, I try to contact these people.
But can't we direct mail these?
And we haven't done that as of yet, because the city is not the proponent for the proposed nomination.
But we recommend, how do we recommend to HPC that they mail these? Why, are you, are you saying that you're gonna go and talk to every, all fifty-six owners of these parcels?
I think I've talked to twenty of them so far.
Is that your goal?
That, that is my goal, there's myself, and also Cindy Convery.
Thank you, okay. And Brian, thank you so much for your persistence, and, yep, Ryan, go ahead.
Well, I just, you know, and I respect where Mr. Aikens is coming from on this, but he's an advocate for this, sending a lobbyist to everybody's front, you know, and everybody's front door with this, that I don't think, Matt, has this been vetted by you?
No, again, we did not have...
I'm reading through this, there's a lot of language in here, that I'm looking at going, "Okay, I get that it's factual", but it's also steered in a direction of trying to support it. The reality is that I know lots of property owners that don't think they'll benefit from Mills Act, it just kinda glosses over this, saying, "Oh, these will benefit everybody", so, I think there's, and it's quite lengthy, but, I mean, if it's an impartial vote, sending the advocate into everybody, to talk to everybody first, seems like you're cheating.
I don't know what that means.
It sure seems like the vote's gonna go a certain direction, if you're gonna put pressure on people to do this.
No.
All right, well, then, why, why can't you just send them the information and have them vote?
Because...
Why do you feel like you have to personally go meet with everybody?
To, to explain the information, because, and what you've seen, I mean, you've seen the newspaper when we first started this, is that people are making decisions based upon not understanding, it's a complex thing. I mean, the no vote that I got was from an individual that basically said, you know, "You can't be comparing this a district, you really need to go out, and you need to talk to the individual property owners before you did that." And obviously, that's what I'm trying to do. The other question I have, I guess I would ask to Matt, because the code does not indicate that there's a timeframe in there, for a person that's submitting the information. So, we have been operating in trying to get this done just as quick as we can, again, as a volunteer effort, to save money to the city, but, again, with no timeframe, just our own timeframe in trying to get it done. And again, the city code does not state that there is a deadline for the process. And in fact, one, one outside the individual asked James that question, James said, "There is no timeframe."
And Mayor and Council, let me clarify that point. So, the code does not set a deadline for any, there is no act now or forever, hold your peace moment. However, the, this process, the present process, began with the city council vote in December, November, when we were at Libby Bowl, to move forward with a, the HPC working on this as an HPC item. The council could set a deadline for that process, it was city-initiated by the council, with no direction for staff time, but direction to the HPC to move it forward, and the council controls that, and can vote that it be done, by a certain date, whether there is or is not support. After that date, any individual, including Brian, you, Ms. Aikens, you can do so, can submit a completed nomination petition, and will be processed in compliance with law. The difference is, that it would have to be submitted as a complete petition, with signatures from a majority of qualifying property owners. That option always remains under the code. The difference here is, if the council voted tonight to set a deadline, that would be for the current city-sponsored effort.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for your service, Brian. All right, anyone ready for a motion? Souza, sorry. Can you unmute Souza, please?
Okay, so, at the, at the recommendation on page one, what about the point, to me, this seems like the place to start, consider the HPC recommendation that staff facilitate Joint HPC Planning Commission meetings to discuss streamlining processes and remove barriers within a local downtown historic district. Do we need to have a motion that staff facilitate this? I mean, I would be strongly in favor of having a joint meeting between the HPC and the Planning Commission, that makes sense.
Councilmember Francina, if I can reply to that, I think the question, it wouldn't necessarily be productive to have that meeting, if we don't know if a historic district is going to be pursued.
Exactly.
I think that the first question would be, if there's a date, and we know then, then the next question would be, okay, now, do we wanna vote? Do we want to have the Joint HPC/PC meeting?
I have one more, another clarity question. Why are these votes not coming into city staff? Why are they going to HPC?
They are required to come to city staff, I'm not sure who in CDD is the individual recipient, but they are required to come to us.
Because what concerns me, and Brian, it's not, it's not anything bad on you, but...
Oh, we went through all this earlier.
Someone had a no, and then you convinced them to turn it into a yes. If you had not had copies of that vote, you would not have known how that individual voted. So, that's what concerns me, and I think that's been concerned to Councilman Blatts, is undue pressure on any of these individuals. That's why mine is, send them this, and put yours and Cindy's name on it, and your phone number, and if they have any concerns, or if they have any questions, you two would obviously be the point of contact. And imagine you could put Lucas's on there, too, he would be the point of contact for the city. But that's how I would do this, and I would get these out as soon as we can, so, and again, if we need a date certain, I say we'd bring it back on the second meeting in November. What are we, in September, October?
We only have one meeting in November, James?
First meeting in December.
First meeting in December?
That's the changeover.
Yes.
Probably.
It is.
Well, you're gonna ask the new council to vote on that, they've never heard of it, or know what's going on.
Yeah, I remember my first vote was Complete Street.
Well, it would either be the first meeting, which is November 8th...
At the NEF Lounge.
Excuse me, it'll either be November 8th, or December...
Yeah, and we typically, in the past, we're gonna bring the, kind of the schedule to council at the next meeting, because in the past, we've canceled the meeting on Election Day.
Okay, well, let's, I'll make a motion to have that vote on the second meeting in November?
I think it'd be probably first meeting in December.
Okay. Which is, what's the date on that, James?
13th.
Yeah, we have it on a list somewhere.
It's the second Tuesday in December.
Pull your app out.
December 13th, okay, December, December 13th?
Yep.
And that's a swearing-in for the new council.
It is.
So, that could be, or the item would be the, what the vote is.
Well, and then, on the same, and on that same, at least we're bringing it back with, so that we can review it, doesn't necessarily mean we have to take an action, where that council has to take an action.
Yeah, but...
They can, they can move it to another time, so they have time to study.
They have a vote to deal with it.
We didn't, we didn't know, we, I didn't know that, when I voted on Complete Street, that I could have asked to have more time to study.
Mine was ATP, by the way, for the first one.
All right, well, we have a motion, second?
I have a quick question, sorry. The, so, I wanna make sure, is this, is this for the council voting on the historic, the properties we own, are we talking about getting the vote in for the historic district?
I think it's the vote for the district.
Yes, the vote for the, for the...
Okay, so that would be, because you gotta give a due date by when those are due, it's due by, because then we, they can't move forward on that date, if the votes are coming in that day necessarily. Okay.
That's a report to the new council on the vote.
Okay. I'm with you, I mean, I wanna find out whether the public's for it, if it's for it, let's get it cooking, if it's not, then let's figure out what we're gonna do.
I, what I had understood, so I wanna make sure, too, is the due date for the votes would be Election Day, but the report would be Ice Queen's next council meeting.
I didn't make this motion, I don't know, all right, is that what, is that the idea?
Yeah, I think that's plenty of time.
Well, then, then it's easy to say, hey, the same date as the main election, is, you make sure you vote in the historic district, but obviously, Brian, and I think the city will help with that, make sure they don't think they're voting on their ballots about it, obviously, that's not it, it's a separate, maybe the same date, but clearly not something they're going to...
Right, avoiding confusion is gonna be clear.
Yeah.
Do a clarification, do we have, Brian, do you have all of the parcel addresses? And Lucas, do you have them?
I got all of the personal addresses, seriously.
So, what we should do is, can we, can't we expedite this for them, and do the mailing ourselves?
Yeah, and here's the, here's, we mentioned, Brian, Chair Aikens kinda mentioned the tension, where, at this point, the staff hadn't been given authority or direction to spend staff time on this project.
And that's allocated now.
What I'm hearing is that there's a consensus that we can help prepare and send out a letter with the contact information, and the information on how to respond by the Election Day, so we'll do that.
And just to clarify, I would recommend that this FAQ document not be included in the city's mailing, because we didn't write it nor vet it.
But they're free, they're free to distribute it.
But they're free to use the same list and send it themselves.
Yeah, I, my question is, should we have something that we send out as a city?
We could write a short, one or two-page primer on what it, sort of answering the more, but not, not the advocacy points.
It's the same thing we do with every ballot measure that's on the regular ballot, we have to have an impartial analysis by the city attorney, right?
Yeah, this isn't a ballot measure, but we can, we can compare something similar.
But it's akin to it, it's on the, it's gonna be in the Election Day, it's kinda like...
We can put a letter together that's a short, what is this, why am I getting it?
I just think that would be good, I mean, I wanna make sure, hopefully, that they're getting good information, so that they don't have to go through all this, and they can make a decision if they wanna be part of historic district or not. And...
Can I respond to that? So, again, working with Matt beforehand, and on all communications that go to the parcel owners that I do, as per talking with Matt, it has made clear that this is a document that comes from the Historic Preservation Commission, has not been reviewed by the city, therefore, not, is not representative of the city, it is the information that we've put forward and are sharing to the best of our ability, so...
City commission.
It is, so, again, not a, not an item.
But it doesn't say that on here anywhere, Brian.
It says that on the, I'm not sure about that. It does say that on the cover sheet that I send them.
So, it would be good to just say it, "As adopted by historic commission date".
Well, I don't mind, I mean, you know, just like when we do ballot measures, there's a ballot argument for, there's a ballot argument against, anybody in the public, I have no problem with the commission doing that.
Problem with that.
It's just that, when, when we're stamping, when it has some city, when it's, the city's opinion should definitely be vetted by the city attorney, in the same way what we do all ballot measures, it just makes sense.
Again, as was just stated, the council never approved support from the staff or the city attorney, so that's...
Well, that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay.
That's, that's why I said that it came up here as essentially a third party.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Just one last thought, Mayor, if I can, please, I have a question for, as of January 18th, is the city of, is the Ojai City Council in favor of moving forward on the local district designation? At the January 18th, 2022 Joint Council meeting with HPC, received four out of five vote to move forward with public outreach and additional research. A vote of four or five reveals that the city council is in support of this concept. See, I would take that sentence and remove it, because we didn't, we're in support of moving the voting forward, and letting the community decide. This implies that four out of five say, "We're for it", and that's not what we imply.
Not exactly what happened.
And there's lots of implications in here.
You were in favor of our moving forward with this process.
Your process, absolutely.
I think that's, I thought that's how it was stated.
Used to be very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Done by a different ad hoc committee. So, what about the other two proposals that we had put forth? Those two proposals, as Councilwoman Francina said, basically are, and this goes back, Councilman Haney, to the discussion that took place on June 12th, because I re-watched that video. Those were meant, Councilwoman Francina, only to, to be predicated upon... Those were meant, Councilwoman Francina, only to be predicated upon the passage of the local downtown historic district, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Well, we do have a motion, anyone want to second it?
Second.
A second, okay, roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protam Haney?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much, thank you, Brian, for being here. We will move on to item number four, gas powered chainsaw permit process. James, do we have a presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the city's adopted a gas powered chainsaw prohibition ordinance, which prohibits gas chainsaws unless a permit is acquired. And permits will be issued for specific reasons. And so the city council adopted that ordinance, and it is about to go into effect. We had brought a, one of the things we had committed to do before it went into effect was to develop a permit process for gas powered chainsaws when they are necessary to be used. We came to council a couple of meetings back with a permit, and the council identified some concerns, and we heard some concerns from the public about people who have, for example, large properties that have a need to clear land and cut large limbs year round for things such as fire clearance and things like that. And so at that meeting, the city council heard that from the community and asked, or directed the staff to come back with some sort of permit that allows for some of those situations. So following that meeting, the staff took a look at a couple of different ways that that can be done. The challenge, when we were trying to develop that permit, is trying to create a way that this would work without essentially creating an exception that, you know, absorbs the rule or swallows the rule. And so we think we've done that here by, we prepared a permit that would allow somebody to come in and apply for either a one-time permit. And again, just to reiterate, it would be if they come in and they can show that they need to cut something down for, you know, health and safety, fire clearance, that just can't be done with an electric powered chainsaw. They can apply for a one-time permit for forty dollars, and, but the second thing this application does is it creates an annual option of two hundred dollars. And the way we tried to figure out to target that is to have it apply to certain zones, which are typically larger properties with more items that may need cleared or maintained, such as the agriculture zone, R-04, which is a lower density, typically, I think it's a four acre residential zone, the IR three, IR two, IR one zones. So it's focusing on the bigger zones, the kind of, with the logic being that not only is it more necessary there, but it's also, there's not as many people that would be impacted by either the sound or the fumes, and it would be in kind of larger, isolated circumstances. So this application creates that process. I did want to note that when we put this out, we got some emails back from some local groups that have different wildfire clearance projects and things like that. And we heard questions from a couple of, if there's a way that those could also be exempted from the requirement, like a specific exemption for, you know, fire clearance grants or fire clearance projects. So that would be another idea that's not mentioned in the report because that came kind of after. But this permit, again, allows for the one-time use or an annual permit for those larger properties that have more of a need for annual clearance, so, ongoing clearance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The ordinance is scheduled to go into effect essentially today, I think is when the ordinance would go into effect. So if we approve this tonight, we'll use it immediately. If not, we would need to delay implementation of the ordinance until we have the permit, so.
Thank you, James, any questions, Bill?
On the listed zones, I guess I'm asking whether or not they're, I know, like, for example, the school district is exempt from anything, an appeal zone.
Right.
But there are PL zones that are private, for example. I don't know how many of them are very large or not, but I'll give you, I guess what I'm trying to say, is there any available, are we contemplating, I don't, I see the need, you know, to kind of limit it to certain zones.
Yeah, or try not to make
But if someone wants to appeal a special circumstance in a zone that's not listed, is there any possibility of that?
I think we can make that adjustment.
Could you still get a variance, is what he's really asking?
Yeah, I think, I think we could make that adjustment, we'd adjust our language and
Rather try to anticipate everything.
Yeah.
Just say, okay, this is default, it's approved, but it doesn't mean you can't come in with a special circumstance and say, yeah, I'm not in one of these zones, but I got a special circumstance.
Wouldn't that be, I mean, it'd be a variance.
Yeah.
But I'd be okay with giving the authority, because obviously, you know, we don't want them to get bogged down with a decision on something like that.
We want a planning commission for a variance.
Yeah, I'd be willing to grant that to the director or the city manager.
Yeah, just do be an administrative discretion.
Yeah.
For special circumstances in any zone.
Okay.
That'd be lawful, for sure.
Yeah.
A variance type process, but not requiring full planning permission review.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I have no idea, let's say you had a tree farm, and it wasn't zoned one of these, and it'd be ridiculous not to be able to have an annual permit if you had to use that much of it or something along those lines. I'm not sure.
Okay, any other, any other questions from council?
Christmas tree park.
Any public comment on this item?
That's the best part of cutting the tree down.
If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who'd like to speak on this item, please use the raised hand function now.
Okay, let's move on to discussion.
I'll go ahead and make a move for approval with a provision for administrative discretion on zone exceptions.
Okay, and would that also include organizations who've had received fire grants to clear?
That could be, if the council wants to
In my motion.
Can we add that, too? Thank you.
And fire grants, fire related grant projects.
You know, yeah, I think that, I think having the discretion to look at them because some of this hardening is gonna be on individual homes, and some of the hardening is gonna be on large acres. So that's where the discretion comes in, is do you want to charge the forty dollar one time for a home versus waiving the two hundred for thirty acres?
Well, some of these organizations that have received grants, you know, are working a lot of different properties, so the idea would be that they would only have to apply for one permit because they've, you know, received a grant. Because it's, if you look at the language in the report, it's project by project.
I have a question, I don't know what the scope of what we're talking about is. I mean, this is not about making it harder to chainsaw stuff, it's about pollution and a significant amount of pollution caused by these. If we're talking about a grant that the state has paid for, I don't understand why they would need gas powered chainsaws at all. If it's for the ease of the grant, then they should have, that should be part of their grant. But we're talking about saying, all right, because state money has come in to some organization that got a grant, we're going to say, oh, pollution's no longer an issue?
Well, I've been told by a couple of experts that electric works, if it's, if the diameter of a tree is beyond twelve inches, that gas is really needed.
Well, then, but we're not restricting it to twelve inches, we're restricting it to saying that they don't have to do anything on a one inch limb or a four inch limb or a nine inch limb, anything, because they were part of a grant.
I think the point is, they've already received these grants and that, you know, they're state funded grants, and so to pay, say, if you do the math, it could end up being four thousand dollars if they were working on those properties, so.
I don't necessarily disagree, but I would think that one of the things that's happening right now is that the State Air Resource Board is actually looking at us and the city of South Pasadena as, quote, "the go-to standards in electrifying equipment." So that's one of the things why we need to do this, is to stay in the lead of that, and I agree with what Ryan is saying. If this is about conforming to our electric mode or removing the two-stroke and all of the waste that goes along with it, so. I don't know whether it's a state grant or how it's funded is relevant, I think it's more based on the size.
Pretty sure it's the Cal Fire Grant we're talking about.
Yeah, I think it's more about the acreage that's being worked there.
Yeah, and I mean, the hypocrisy of the same significant group of people destroying you and I has hardest, we've worked on getting an appropriate electrification ordinance reach code and having the appropriate types of exemptions to it that we sat down with environmental experts and agreed to, and then so they didn't like it. Now we're talking about those same people going, oh, don't worry about the gas powered chainsaw, even though that has a significantly larger effect on our environment than any type of new construction does in Ojai. And this is not talking about natural gas, this is talking about actual petroleum that burns in a manner. And believe me when I tell you, I am on the Air Pollution Control District, we talked about this a lot. This is not us trying to be overzealous. This, these types of devices cause a disproportionate amount of the pollution we're trying to avoid. We finally got the city of Ojai down below its state and federal thresholds. These are the types of things that lead to going back up. And I don't have any idea why those same people, assuming that's who you're talking about, Mayor, is, would somehow turn a blind eye to environmentalism because now it's easier for them that they got a grant. And that grant should have included what the, why would they even get a grant that isn't going to be absolutely electric power only unless necessary? And if you're saying twelve inches is the standard, fine, then let's talk about that, but this is not that. This is about giving carte blanche to a grant to just disrupt our environment in a very hypocritical way. And can you imagine, if I'm sitting there as the homeowner, I can't go cut that limb down with my gas powered chainsaw? I gotta wait for the grant people to come in and spend state money to go do it themselves because they have the permit exception that I don't as an individual property owner? That does not make any sense to me.
Well, what, it seems to me that one way to handle this is just to say, we're gonna provide the administrative discretion, but not a blanket exemption.
So that's part of your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Well, I have a question about the motion, then, what do you, for grants, it's
No, no, no exception for grants.
Oh, okay, right, so we're just saying
I'm taking that away from my motion.
You're saying it's discretionary?
The administrative discretion for need, but they still have to pay for the permit.
Yes, I was gonna say
Still have to pay for the permit, I'm not, I'm saying, no, we don't waive the permit fee because we want to discourage the use of gas powered equipment.
So that everybody understands, because I was trying to understand that, too, is what I'm hearing is, so we could always, based on need, give a permit.
Allow it in another zone, but you still have to pay for the permit.
But you have to pay for the permit.
That's my point.
And so if somebody, if somebody has, and this, you know, if somebody comes in and they have ten properties, they want to do it on, they're paying for ten permits and showing the, showing the need on each of those properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there should be a clear, there should be a standard that if there's government funding to do it, that should not be an excuse not to have to follow the rules that a regular private property owner has to. That doesn't make any sense to me, that's what I'm trying to avoid here.
That's what we had, that's what I've, now the motion includes that.
I just want to make sure that's clear. Because if in the discretionary process, that becomes clear that you're favoring grants over individual property owners.
I'm talking about the zone, that's all I'm talking about.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I wish I could do.
Okay, roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Protam Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, all right, we'll move on to our final item, authorization to apply for grants and install proposed new electric vehicle charging ports and additional bike racks. Staff report, James?
Yes, thank you, and I have a couple of slides, because there's some visuals on this, I'll try to keep it brief. But it's a little bit of an unusual item. Normally, when we come to council on an item like this, we have like one, like a grant, and we are bringing that grant to council for review, so I just want to explain why that, why it's a little different on this one. And what it, what really is happening is, we have our contract grant writer, they've started doing work for us, and they have found a number of grants on both electric vehicle chargers and bicycle racks. And so we started to talk about all these different grants, the report mentions three or four of them, and there's a couple more even after that. And we realized what we need to do is basically come to council and get a plan approved for what we'd like to do, and then use that plan and apply for each of the different grants, and we think that we have a pretty good shot at getting most of them funded. We do have some funding in our budget, so either way, we can get started on the plans. But if we're able to get grants, we'll be able to leverage it and really maximize these plans, so. I want to talk a little bit about how we developed these plans for both the additional electric vehicle charging ports and the additional bike racks. People may have seen, over the summer, we tried something a little different where we posted some questions on Facebook and social media, where we're asking people to tell us where they think we need these things. And we got good feedback on, when we asked the bicycle rack questions. And there's a bullet point list here on this slide where it shows some of the responses we got, such as outside of grocery stores, Libby Park, all public parking lots, behind the Ojai Museum, near the skate park, near the mob shop, at the intersection of each street with Ojai Avenue, Matilahah Junior High, Bart's Books, the Chevron Station, and the medical clinic on the thirty-three at Korea Road. And so we started off kind of asking people because it's one of those things, we had started to notice, and we saw, and we heard from people that were seeing bikes tied to poles and, you know, kind of not having adequate racks in certain locations, but we wanted to hear, you know, we didn't assume we knew everywhere that needed them, so we wanted to hear from people. So we asked that question, we took that, we also had a couple of our public work staff people go out and identify when they saw three or four bikes tied to something that wasn't a bike rack where those sites were, to try to really see where we have the need for them. And so the staff report has this map that we developed, and I won't really get into it, but are focused too much on it, but the map showed essentially, there's these green triangles, and those are, we did an inventory of existing bike racks. And then we took the sites that the public had identified and some sites that we saw bikes, where bike racks were needed, and we put them together into a plan, with the idea being, right now, the city has ten thousand dollars in its budget for bike racks. When we started doing the math, we see that we could easily spend that ten thousand dollars, and we probably have a need for another ten thousand dollars in bike racks. So we've identified kind of the first, I think we ended up identifying that this would be about fifteen thousand dollars worth of bike racks, so that we could apply for grants for this first phase. And you'll notice on the map, I won't go through all of them, but some of the red dots where we're gonna, where we propose adding bike racks are spots that were specifically mentioned by the community in those posts, such as behind Ojai Valley Museum. We have, we have some bike racks near the mob shop, near Bart's Books was another request, near the different parks, Clough Vista, which did not really have one before. Libby Park, including lower, there's several in Libby, but there weren't any in Lower Libby, so it'd be adding some in Lower Libby. And then just a few different sites around town that were discussed. So, and near the Westridge Market is another example. So this map is what we're kind of proposing as phase one. We wanted to get the buy-in from the council to then go, to include this map in our grant applications for funding. We have a lead, yeah, one second, we have a lead on a five thousand dollar grant that would help us complete phase one that we can apply for as soon as there's approval, so.
On the map, it only showed downtown Ojai, it didn't show the Y or anything else, is that the only place we asked people to comment? Or did all the comments end in that area?
No, most of the comments centered in that area, there were one or two that weren't in downtown, and that was kind of my first response is like, we're gonna have to expand past downtown, but we, because the comments were mostly downtown, and then when our staff came back and saw the bikes tied to poles and things, they were mostly downtown, we decided to start phase one as downtown. I do think there'll, we, the phase two, I think we'd expand out towards the Y and Maricopa, and then, and then some future phases in some other areas as well. And the reality, somebody asked me like, just, you know, how, how much do you think we really need in bike, like to really get as many bike racks as we need? And I think the uh, answer is probably a lot more than we'd think. Um, because as you can see from this, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, um, it lets us add several, but it's not, um, it's not as many as I think you'd think. Their, bike racks are actually a little more expensive than I think.
Well, at least it's a start. Um, any, any questions from council?
And there's a second part to that.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so second thing, similarly, electric vehicle chargers. And, and you know, as we were preparing this report, the state put out their news that uh, you know, that you've, I don't know how everybody feels about it yet. I think it's still too fresh, but the state essentially said by, what is it, twenty thirty-five that, that it'll, will be all-electric. And so.
Like, can't, can't sell.
Can't, no, no, we're not gonna be all-electric. It's gonna be selling new vehicles. Big difference.
Exactly. Well, and it's funny because some people have said that's unrealistic and I'm like, uh, Ford's kind of already gone that way, you know, and Ford's one of the big manufacturers. So, um, so we'll see what happens with that. But the reality is, I think, uh, Ojai as a whole was very, uh, I thought kind of ahead of the curve. We were the first, are one of the first agencies I had seen um, in Ventura County that installed chargers. We installed four level-two chargers in twenty eighteen. But at that time, the council, when they approved those, said, well, come back with a plan to keep installing more, you know, we need more than just four. And so that never really came back. So we figured with the, the mandate going into effect, a bunch of grants becoming available to start helping fund these, uh, to help cities meet these mandates. Now's the time where we need to come back and identify the next wave of chargers. Um, the, the staff report had a lot of data as far as, you know, there are privately-owned chargers, so to speak. There are Tesla chargers, which not all cars can really use Tesla chargers um, necessarily. Um, and so there's, there's, there are other chargers, but as far as publicly-available city chargers, we currently have four. Um, we have funding in the budget where we could afford another three or so, but we have grants available right now that would allow us to leverage that to six more chargers. Um, one of the catches is that for one of the locations, we'd have to put four chargers in that one location. If I had, if I, if that wasn't a requirement, I would have liked to maybe spread them out a little bit more. But for that reason, we're recommending, and this map shows, um, we're recommending adding um, four chargers to the uh, Farmer's Market parking lot near Aliso Street and then two additional chargers at City Hall. The reason uh, we're adding, I know the, one of the first questions will be why more at City Hall? And the reason is it's also utilizing the solar panels, so we'd be able to actually generate the electricity for the um, chargers, which I think is, is a really kind of cool, cool thing to do. Um, and so if the council approved that proposal, uh, at the end of the day, we'd have, uh, or at the end of this phase, we'd have a total of ten chargers across three sites, City Hall, Farmer's Market, um, parking lot and the park-and-ride parking lot. And then um, back when we, when the council approved the prior uh, round of chargers, we had identified potential future sites as shown on this map. And so we're showing that we, we're using that map as the guide to try to meet those um, goals. So there's still a couple sites we'd want to get in the future, but for this year, we'd be able to, to move forward on, on those um, six additional charging ports. I did want to just point out, so this is the actual overhead of the exact spots we would use. And so at the top of that map is Aliso Street, so it is that back section of the Farmer's Market parking lot. Uh, we think that works well, A, because it's very flat, so it's ADA accessible. Um, also because these are level-two chargers, which take a few hours to charge. They're not the quick charge. Uh, we think this makes sense where somebody can come park and visit the stores on, in downtown and help our local businesses and then go back to their vehicles after a few hours. They're not gonna be the ones that should be front and center fifteen-minute quick chargers. Um, so um, the only real drawback we noted, or we wanted to note is that uh, I think one question we'll get is the Farmer's Market, don't they close that parking lot? And so yes, the parking lot's closed Sunday mornings uh, until two P M. But I think it um, makes sense for weekdays and uh, and Friday and Saturday as well, so. So uh, I think I kind of went over this. Um, there was one other key issue that the council has asked about in the past and we didn't have the data at the time, so we wanted to just kind of note it. And if there's future council action, we can, we can take that. But when we first put these in, we weren't sure if we were charging enough or if we were charging too much for people to use the chargers. Um, the city ended up charging one dollar per hour for the chargers. Uh, and so what we found after a couple of years in pulling the data is that each charging point, our port essentially costs the city about a thousand dollars a year uh, for the electricity. In other words, we're subsidizing about a thousand dollars a year. It's not a huge number, but as we add more, that number will grow from four thousand to ten thousand if we have ten chargers and, you know, potentially keep growing. So I have seen, oh.
Did you get a usage? I mean, I, I'm, I, I don't really care. We're losing a thousand. How, how much, how much were they used on average?
Yes, uh, so we have.
And were different ones in different areas used more?
Yes, and we have some of that data in the report. I don't know if we have all of it, but we have a bit, basically three thousand sessions across the four charging point, ports in the last year. So in the, uh, what does that break down to, um?
Well, I read that somewhere, but that didn't, I didn't really.
Yeah, it's not super granular, but, but ten sessions a day essentially is what that breaks down to. The average session, two hours uh, each, so twenty hours a day.
There's no way they're averaging twenty.
Across four sites, so it's.
Twenty hours over four.
Across four sites, so it's five hours a day. Yes. Yes, and um, then we note that that uh, is equivalent to sixty, over sixty-seven thousand kilograms of greenhouse gas emissions that are reduced.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll.
Yeah, I, I, actually I do con- uh, concerned about the subsidy because uh, if, if they're programmed to, to, I thought we had the idea of maybe programming them, so we'd also, we'd get some capital recovery that we could put into restricted fund to fund more installations or more matching funds. So, uh, you know, in that sense, I think it, you know, we should be, uh, we should, the, the subsidy restricts our ability to um, have more, populate the city with more charging ports. So I, I, I do have an issue with that. I think we ought to adjust it to at least break even. And also, do these grants now are gonna be opening up for uh, the solar structures in the parking, public parking lots to go along with these proposed charging stations? Is that gonna be opening up for more grant applications to integrate that?
Yeah, we do think that those grants, I mean.
I would certainly like to see that.
We all hear that the grants are coming. We keep kind of joking that we keep hearing they're coming, they're coming, they're coming, but we do think that those are really, uh, those are the kinds of grants that seem to be getting funded at this point.
And I, I, the, the grants for um, charging stations are different through, at least through air pollution control than the uh, um, solar infrastructure stuff. But I don't know, you know, a lot of it's in that federal bill and who knows what.
If it's, if it can be together, let's try for it anyway.
See what happens. Uh, any questions from council? Are you finished, James?
I, I just.
Wait, one, one second. Are you finished, James?
Uh, I, I'll just respond real quick to um, Councilmember Wyrick's comments. That is why we wanted to bring this report, because I didn't think that the council, I remembered going years back that um, the council was told that they, the estimate was that these would be paying for themselves. And so now we have a couple of years of data, they aren't paying for themselves, so.
We can make it, they can be programmed.
Yeah, and so we can bring an item back where we can um, come back with a fee adjustment.
And that money can go into restricted funds.
Okay. All right, questions from council? Uh, Randy?
It just reminded me of a song. The electric cars come uh, driving down the road, hurrah, hurrah. The little one stops to plug it in. I remember when this came about, the electric people thought I was crazy because I said, why are we doing this for free? When, when, when it's your car. Um, and so the question is, we don't really know how many chargers are actually in the homes in our community. Um, and we don't really know what the real need for these chargers are, other than for our tourist-based folks. Because we don't know how many people, I mean, almost everyone that I know that has an electric car has a Tesla charging station in their garage or something of that, or equal to. So it comes back to me, you know, do, have we studied what the real need is or are we just saying we're gonna be futuristic? So if we're gonna be futuristic, then I think what we need to do is, is like Councilman Wyrick, is increase the fee and I would actually increase it so that if grants aren't available, that we have the ability to fund some of these in-house. The other, um.
Um, can I interrupt you for?
Yeah, I'm gonna have one more, one more question for James.
Okay, question, all right.
Did we look at any of the, of the available parking in the downtown corridor that is not a dedicated parking for uh, bicycle racks?
Oh, for bicycle racks. Can you repeat the question? I, I had chargers in my mind.
So for instance, um, in front of the uh, the um, Jim and Rob's and um, the museum, that whole area has no parking. And it seems to me that if we're gonna be putting in bicycle racks that we need, that we need to find places where they're not gonna necessarily impact um, the parking situation that we already have. So that might help us to actually even do more if we look at those sites. I just was wondering if you had a praise to those.
That's a great question because um, I was trying not to get too into the weeds, but we we met as a parking committee and we actually looked at literally, you know, different bike racks and tried to figure out which bike racks made sense in Ojai. And we discovered a new um, a new model of bike rack and it, it's in the packet. It's on um, attachment F page three of three. But that essentially, they're designed to go into um, where a lot of cities are using them when they re- remove parking and then they put bike parking instead. What we had talked about in parking committee was putting them where there's no parking right now and having these bike racks that have essentially kind of look like a parking space, but they're for bicycles. And so we did talk in the parking committee about the three large bike racks that we're adding, getting three of those and trying them. And I think that the next phase, once we try those, would be actually starting to put them out where maybe there's some red curb or, you know, kind of trying to figure out how we could do that, so.
I would think that Kenyatta Corner, heading east would, if I had to identify a place, if we want people to actually, well, I'll save it when we're in the discussion there.
Thank you. Um, any public comment on this item, Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand function now.
Okay, let's move on to discussion.
So getting back to that is, is it just seems like that's a, that's a great starting point. And then I, I remember when this came, I, I looked at this last Thursday when it came out and I started counting the dots. We have a lot of bike racks in town already.
I think a lot of them, we talked about this, the, the strategy for years, I think, was to kind of hide them so they didn't have a visual impact. We talked to the parking committee about like, it's not really something you need to hide, you know, you can, you can.
No, we actually, we, we want to encourage it.
Yeah, I've, there's been stores I've gone to for years where I was like, I never knew there was a bike rack there when I looked at the.
I, I also think we need to encourage um, uh, the bike racks on public, on, on city-owned property. Because when I looked at your list, out of the twelve sites, five were private.
Yeah.
And it just amazes me that the mob shop doesn't have a hundred bike parking spots on there. So, um, but maybe that's part of the, of the outreach is I, we can't tell the Chevron owner to put a, a bike rack up, but we could tell him the positive impacts that it might have on his business and where they might benefit him in placing them.
Yep.
So having that interaction with them, I think is, is, and then again, looking at Kenyatta down on Main Street, we want people parking and walking on Main Street. That's a, to me, a perfect spot for them.
Yeah, that, that whole complex.
Uh, Bill?
I'm showing my age with this comment. Let's not completely overlook the fact, you said there's some supply chain issues here?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's not completely overlook the fact we might be able to co- contract some local fabrication and powder coating. I mean, we've got a lot of very talented people uh, in the industrial areas of Ventura, for example. And, you know, I mean, I, there might be some capacity for local localism here. I know that makes sound a little ridiculous and crazy, but.
With some of the delays we're facing, that's probably a.
Why not, I mean, I mean, we may be able to support some localism here a little bit. Uh, this is not high-tech stuff.
Yeah, if we could find a cost point that also made them have a little, because I, I love the, the different designs. I know it's, it's kind of expensive when it gets into the custom design stuff. But if, you know, if we could make it functional and artistic and, and reasonably priced, um, I think that would be great. It'd be really cool if, if we're gonna put in places that they have a little Ojai uniqueness to them, I think would be neat.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, it's not that they were hidden, it's that a lot of them, I think, were put out of the public right of way. There's a lot of them that are stuck in little sidewalks that are both problematic and helpful. Um, but I also realize that uh, nobody knew what they were for a long time. There's a lot of people go, they, they think it's like a bus stop that you're holding on to.
I know.
So you don't fall off the curb. And I remember the first time I saw somebody park a bike on, I went, oh, that's what that is. Um, and you know, the, and I, now I, you know, now, now you can get like seventeen bikes on, on one of those at once, but I think, I think that would be really cool. But obviously, it's gotta make sense, cost-effectivize. And then we're gonna end up with old ones that aren't cool, like the new ones, and that could be an issue too.
We might have some really talented fabricators and powder coders.
I know that the only hard part is the, the raw materials for that stuff is expensive all on its own. Um, the one, other things I want to say are, uh, the Farmer's Market one is a great location, but I'm not okay.
Surplus oil, oil field pipe.
Yeah, right. If we could, if we could get, you know, repurposed, uh, the hard part is rolled steel, I think, which might be tough, but if you could, that'd be really cool. Um, that'd be a really neat way to do it too. Um, the Farmer's Market is a great location. The problem is that I'm not willing to say we're okay losing one out of seven days. That's almost twenty percent. I mean, it's like sixteen, seventeen percent of the usage and it's the main day where it's a problem. And we're, and we already have limited parking on those days. So we're multiplying these effects. Not the bike rack part, but the, the charging station part. I, I just know that there's so many locations we could put in charging. Uh, if we needed it to be near there, uh, Mr. Wyrick here happens to own a building there. I don't know if he would have a problem with charging going in there. I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but that's located right around the corner. There's the bank, there's a number of places. Um, and I know we don't want to necessarily put them in all private places, but you know, if they're not earmarked to only being that, that might be helpful, but I, it wouldn't make sense to me to put it.
Kind of Farmer's Market annex.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great location, but uh, adjacent to the Farmer's Market makes a lot of sense, so they can actually be used. I, I do agree, as we scale this up, they should make financial sense so that we can deliver. And what I was thinking about, I'm going, well, you know, parking spaces don't necessarily subsidize something, going, yeah, but you've already built the road. That's a little different. You're not adding the electricity that you're giving away. We all know that we wouldn't be okay with a parking spot where there was a gas pump for free and we were paying for it as a city. So we have to find some balance in that. Um, I, I, but I do want to say, as far as a human being and a council member, I am absolutely in the camp of build it and they will come. Build the infrastructure, get it out there. People will see its ubiquitousness. It's everywhere. It's easy to use. They will move into electric vehicles for a lot of good reasons. But I think, um, you know, I'm still saying I, I've, I've been trying, although I don't think it's gonna happen yet. I want to see the first service station, the first convenience store, first gas station-style electric charging station in Ventura County, uh, rather than anywhere else in the world. I hope we get that. Because there's a lot of complicated stuff to that infrastructure. So we gotta start building it out. Uh, the other location, and I don't own an electric vehicle, I will, I guarantee I will someday, but the parking lot across the street from what happens to my office on Blanche, I think we ought to be utilizing for, especially for electric. I was, that's why I was asking about data on their usage, because places that don't have as much parking is where we should put it, not the places that are the most popular. I love that we're helping you get a charging station if you have your electric vehicle. That doesn't mean you get the premier parking spot necessarily. Um, that, that parking lot on Blanche, except when it's being used by the museum um, and that it has some serious upkeep needs, which may happen hopefully at some point. That seems like a perfect location because we're, we should be funneling people there. Or I know it's private property, although that one we do have our own access to.
Public use of it.
No, yeah, well, on that one, we have public use. But like the, and I know behind Caro's and that whole area, and pardon for me calling it what I want to call it. But uh, that's another underutilized parking lot. So I'd rather us not take, you know, I know that you're looking at, hey, where do we put prime location charging spots? I don't think they should be necessarily prime location. The other thing is, if we piggyback them on places where there's already electric, so like the park-and-ride or City Hall, and I get City Hall because of the solar, but then we're really extending out so many units that we're probably not gonna fill them all up at the same time. And if I want to go one place, well, everybody who has an electric car doesn't just want to go that one place. That might be better, but that's also the key parking for everything else. And the, the more popular the spot is, we don't necessarily want to limit it to electric. It makes sense to take a spot that's maybe not full all the time. So. So Park and Ride, which is almost always full, doesn't seem to me like the place we would add more electric infrastructure. We'd do it somewhere else, maybe close enough that they could still be accessed if they need to go to Park and Ride. But I wouldn't just say, let's all throw them right next to each other, because that seems to me to be inefficient. I'd rather see them, you know, two here, two here, now if they have to be four in the same spot, other considerations. But I wouldn't just go to, hey, these are the main locations, because those are main parking locations where we need regular parking as well. Maybe somewhere where, hey, I'm willing to, especially if I'm getting subsidized by the city, maybe have to block an extra half a block.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and maybe it's somewhere where we don't see people parking first, and that's how we get them there, by adding the electric infrastructure. The other thing is that, and it ties to that, I was just gonna say, is there's the lost value of the parking spot for the general public. So the more popular the parking spot is, when we take it off the market, if you will, for general parking, we're reducing more of our own value of parking, and we always, you know, we, there's a large debate going on in Ojai all the time about whether parking is an issue or not.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd rather see a underutilized spot adding electric than, than one that doesn't. And then, uh, let's see, I think, I think that was it.
Yeah.
So the, but that parking lot, you know, on Blanche, and it's right next to the museum, and we can have carte blanche to do what we want there, and the bike rack, I just, you know, I, and it's really dilapidated, I think that would be a prime spot for some of those.
Okay.
Susa, any comments?
Uh, no, not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, all good comments, look, seems like we're all in consensus. Thank you, James, for making this happen, an exciting step forward. Rin?
Again, the, is it just the cost is why we're not putting in the faster charging chargers? Why do I want to give up two hours of parking when I can give up a half hour?
Yeah.
They don't stay there just for a minute.
What? No, actually, well, again, in the beginning, a lot of people would have someone drive their, like, I'm gonna drive my electric car down and charge, will pick me up, and then we'll go to dinner or something. Then I'll come back on the way home, and then we'll take the car home, because it's charged. I'm not sure how it works now, but I'm just saying, if they, if you can charge them faster, it seems like that's beneficial, I just don't know what the, I don't know if the cost ratio is worth it.
Yeah, we, we, we tried to like, think through like, what's needed where, and here's, here's why we recommended the Level Two, which is kind of the mid-level, is a lot of people now have Level Three, because of the Tesla chargers, or, I shouldn't say a lot of people, but most of the chargers in Ojai right now are Level Three, besides people's home chargers, you know, but.
You might back up and explain.
The. Yeah, so Level Three is the fast chargers, 15 minutes or so, you know, and the, those, we have, I think, a dozen of those at Boku, and then we have more of them at the Ojai Valley Inn. And so we felt like there was a lot of those. There aren't as many Level Two chargers right now, and kind of one of the basic things, so when you're in a 15-minute charger, you've got to move it in 15 minutes. And so, like, if you're coming into town and you want to hang out for a couple hours, you, you can't leave your car, you know, because they, they bill you pretty aggressively when you stay in the spot. And so we kind of were thinking, we're filling that need of, there's not as many Level Two chargers, which are the ones that take, you know, three to four hours to charge, and there's some incentive to the city of putting Level Two chargers in, where it's like, hey, if you're gonna sit there and charge, come shop and come spend money in Ojai, and, you know, come, come run your errands and come do that. So that was why we aimed for Level Two. A lot of people at home either have Level One or Level Two, and Level One is the one that charges like four or five miles an hour, and so it's really just, you drive.
It's an overnight charger.
Yeah, you drive around Ojai for the day, you go home, you plug in for the night, and then Level Two, and so some people have upgraded at home to get Level Two, so that, it does, there's probably more of those than we realize. But we do see now typically, from probably eight to, 8:00 AM to about 3:00 PM, our chargers are pretty full now. And we're starting to get more people where they're waiting for the person to move before the, you know, for them to be able to come in and take it.
Yeah.
So, so anyway.
I, that's one thing we looked at, Randy, in Air Pollution Control District with the charging stations, was the fast chargers were great, except that you had this problem that people weren't picking their cars up in 15 or 20 minutes. So you ended up with a lack of being able to turn them over and get it taken care of. And then it was added cost for enforcement. Sure, they're getting charged by maybe Tesla or the charging company, but somebody's got to go write them a ticket to get their car out of the stall, so somebody else can actually use it. And that enforcement cost, as you know, is rarely ever made back by the tickets you write. So it ended up being a really tough situation. It's, you know, I, I think these are the, these are the growing pains of a new industry and how it's all gonna work. We have to have enough electricity, we have to have enough places for people to park, but we gotta figure out a way to get people in and out, so it works. And it's, it's, it's weird, I mean, there's some weird considerations.
Well, maybe that helps us, again, if we look at some of these sites, where we know down the road, we might be able to do future solar canopy.
Mm-hmm.
And that might be, again, a reason to choose that site, is, is what are the advantages to it?
Yeah, I mean, hypothetically, in the long run, we could, you know, actually profit from, you know, a small amount from doing it, and incentivize everybody to do it. It's really, it's really coming along great, but, you know, we, it's, it's tough how you get it to work exactly right.
I think the other thing, we keep talking about how we want to remove vehicles from coming into town. So how do we, you know, co-op the, all the parking that's available at Nordoff High School? You know, so that you're telling people to charge, and we got a trolley that's going down, eventually it'll be an electric trolley that's gonna pick you up and bring you into town.
Mm-hmm.
For that two hours.
Yeah.
So again, we should be thinking outside of, of the box on that.
Yeah, and time will tell, and it is weird, and we're in transition, and it's, it's exciting, too. So I think we're all in agreement that we're all, so anybody want to make a motion, or?
Move, approve recommendations, approve a plan to install six new Level Two ports, and approve a plan to install additional bike racks and authorize staff to apply for grants for these bike racks.
Okay.
And can, can we amend that to not limit it to what you have identified on that map, but to, again, take into consideration Kenyatta, you know, look at other places while you're doing this?
That's, that's my question for you, James, is, yeah, are, are, do you, do you want the discretion through the, the staff to just pick some sites, or do you want to come back to council, or?
So here's, here's the one thing, the one kind of box I want to check today, is we have grants that we are ready to submit, if we can put a map on it, put a map in the application that says the council approved this map. So I'd like to get that approved, and then if we have the discretion to, we know this is basically the, like, a, like, the next phase, and that there's gonna be future phases, so if we have the discretion to then come back, and next time we can put it on consent, where it's, here's the next, you know, six sites, we want to do this, you know, put bike racks in, or here's the next.
So the grant requires that, that, that much specificity?
Mm-hmm. In particular, there's one Southern California Edison grant, they want to, they wanted the photo showing exactly which sites we were, which parking spaces were gonna be converted.
That's how it works.
That's a bummer.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have a motion with an amendment, we have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay. Roll call, please, Gail?
Well.
Sorry, Ryan.
No, the amendment was. Well, it's just a tough situation, I mean, I'm not against this, but I don't like the current layout of the locations, like, if, I, I can't, I, I definitely disagree with putting it on the Farmer's Market site and purposely undercutting 18% of its usage by knowing that it'll never be used on a Sunday for, for half the day on one of the prime days. There, I, I, I would be okay with, I mean, I, I'd like to see a couple others moved, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to micromanage the, everything out of this, but what can, what can we do, if, if you need, if you don't have that flexibility in location, then do we need to sit here and tell you exactly where we want them this second? I mean, if that's it, then.
Council could just approve the City Hall site, we just want to be able to apply for the grant for the Farmer's Market site. And I'll tell you this, just, just to make one point, is this chart is every public parking lot we have, and the reason why each one didn't work. There, so we did look, we didn't like, just go, the Farmer's Market one is easy, we looked at each of them, you know, Club Vista, we couldn't get it.
What about the main parking lot behind the arcade? Rather than Farmer's Market parking?
So ironically, the, the reason why we went Farmer's Market instead of the main one behind the arcade was because we didn't want to give the prime spots, we wanted to have it be further back.
Yeah, I agree with you, that's a problem, too. Is there, is there a second, can we, can we approve it with the idea being you're gonna find a secondary location that's not, I just hate the idea of, I mean, prime time, I mean, the busiest day, and we're locking it up.
There, there might be another way to achieve this.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, if you're doing your applications, is just choose the app, choose the ones that are, like Ryan's saying, that aren't as critical to the use of the everyday parker, parking person, and, and submit the ones that, that you know will benefit the community, but not adversely affect them.
Yeah, how long, how long do you have till this grant? I mean, can we bring it back as a consent item for the next one, and we can, if it needs to just get polished a little bit?
I think we could bring it back on consent. There's a deadline in September, but I think we could bring it on consent on the next one. There is one parking lot that I think might work if, let me just see if there's a general consensus to go, this is, what about Lower Libby instead of?
So I'll, my, I'll amend my motion, say with possible modifications.
Yeah.
Lower Libby would be fine. So if we can get lower.
I know the, the closest parking lot I can think of on Sunday that's not full.
Well, and we want them there.
To Farmer's Market happens.
But, but we want, but that's another site that we want them there.
Right. Okay, so we have a, a new motion, amended motion.
Right.
And a second, someone like to second that?
Does that work for you, James?
Yeah, with Lower Libby instead of Farmer's Market.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you all for working that out, and we, okay, so roll call, please, Gail?
So who is the second?
Randy.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Mayor Protamhaney?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we will move on to council member reports, and I went to the Long Beach League of California Cities Annual Conference, and with Matt, got to see you there, that was really wonderful, and got to learn a lot, and got a lot of interesting workshops. Matt and I attended a workshop focusing on labor and employment law, and specifically justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace, and making room for everybody at the table, and that was really quite fascinating. I also went to workshops on this, on Surplus Land Act, solutions to reduce homelessness, as well as a harassment prevention training, and it was a really rich opportunity, so really grateful to be there, and I'm looking forward to sharing new ideas that I learned. Anybody else? Nope, okay. City managers report?
Just a couple of quick things. I try to, try to give a, kind of an annual update on our short-term rental enforcement, and, and we also, right now, are planning to do some PR, reminding people, because we're hearing more and more again about people buying houses, moving to Ojai, and not knowing or not having been told at any time when they're buying a very expensive house, that they could not do short-term rentals in Ojai. So we're, we're starting, we're, kind of every year, we do a PR push, and we're gonna do that again, but I did want to just provide the, the brief update that since January 1st, 2022, the city has issued 15 additional citations, I think we're now in our fourth or fifth year, so just this year, 15 additional citations thus far for short-term rental violations. 14 of those 15 have since corrected their advertisements. We get a lot of questions about that, where people say, but they're not allowed to be on Airbnb at all, right? And the answer is, they can be listed, but they have to be listed for a longer than 31, or 30-day rental, essentially. And so when we say we get them into compliance, they have to take off anywhere where it says that their short-term rentals are allowed, or one week, or two weeks, or whatever, and it has to say clearly that it's not a short-term rental, and that it can only be rented for longer than, than that period. And we also check the calendar box, so that, to make sure that you can't book it for less than 30 days, it has to be booked for a longer than 30 days. So 14 of the 15 citations have already been corrected and come into compliance, and we recently had a meeting with the last remaining property owner, and expect that one to get into compliance as well. So we do continue that, we do know that there are some listed just outside of the city that are short-term rentals, and those we can't enforce against because they're outside the city, but all the ones in the city, we're, we're getting into, continuing to work to keep them in compliance.
Thank you, James. Bill?
Is the county enforcing its rules?
You know, every year, I say I'm gonna connect with the county and kind of see where they're at, I'm not sure the answer at this point, but we, I think it's time we do that.
Would there, is it possible ever to have a reciprocal agreement where the county would take, let's say, something in the arbor lot that's on the other side of the city limits, that we become aware of, that doesn't appear to be in compliance with city regulations, that we can effect, report that to the county, for, for them to possibly engage in, in enforcement? Are there any kind of reciprocal arrangements on these kinds of enforcements? Does that exist?
We can always report to the county's process, 100%.
Yeah.
Whether we can get the county to agree that we could do more than just report is open if the county agrees.
Okay.
I think we could start with Supervisors Office on those discussions.
Yeah, we can reach out, see if they're enforcing.
We can enforce it outside their jurisdiction if it's violation of the law, too.
Yeah.
All right, Wood.
I just wondered if a collaborative agreement might, there might be a possibility here.
We'll check with the county, I think, that, what, kind of where they're at in their enforcement will answer some of our questions, so.
So, so the Southern California Edison issue, it's interesting, because Lenny brought it up two weeks ago, and he's, he's expecting like, that to happen, and the reality is, we have a relationship with them, and we are interacting. I think the more important issue.
Edison complains about us more than any other city.
Is this a future agenda item?
Yeah, so the future agenda item is, how do we, how do we make, it's a state law, how do we enforce state law?
Yeah.
That small business owners in the landscape, or in these professional services, have to have their trucks with their state license number on it, a number to reach someone who is the owner of the business, and the business name. And I tried doing that when we were trying to do the gardening services, and I couldn't get anything, so I'm, I'm just saying, we got to figure out, because that's, I'm seeing more tree trimmers coming into Ojai that are in unmarked registered trucks than I've ever seen.
Yeah, we've seen it, you know, I was, I meant to respond when Lenny spoke, but we had a, a bunch of speakers on different topics, so, but we had an incident a couple weeks ago where we stopped, it might be the one he was talking about, we stopped a landscaper who had no identification, and they were belligerent, and they threw all their stuff on the floor and got in a truck and drove off. Um, so, um, we stopped them from trimming anymore, but, you know, I don't know that I would call it a happy ending, uh, necessarily. Um, but, so we are seeing that now, I think for us, uh, uh, we keep enforcing, but yeah, maybe it's, if we're seeing that, maybe it's time to figure out how to require them to identify. Although I will say, I think some of these, some of these people are purposely trying not to be identified and discovered, so that it'll be a challenge.
I was just going to say, I, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if you know this, but I believe that if you're a licensed contractor in the state of California, you're required to have your name and your license number on your vehicle.
You have to be placard.
100%, a licensed contractor has to have the placard, the name, license number, and contact info.
So they, they may be in violation, we don't need a separate rule for it, it's already a rule.
Well, they, they also may not be licensed contractors, which is a different violation.
Another issue, right, but that's, yeah, but that's.
They're just log carriers.
But what you're talking about, um, yeah, you, I, there's, I have lots of contractors I know. I know they're all trying their hardest to follow those rules. Not all of them have it nailed down to the T, but it, it is required on any vehicle to have all that information, including your license number.
Right.
So if they don't, it could be a sign, and, um, we have an app for it.
It's interesting, uh, your actual business card has to have your contractor's license on it.
Yep.
Well, I, I have a future agenda item.
I had one more item, can I? I, I promised I would do this, we had a couple speakers at a prior meeting, asked for kind of what's going on with the ATP, and so I wanted to, um, just give a brief update on that, because we had started, um, the right-of-way acquisition process in June. Um, we had that special council meeting to get that, uh, initiated. Uh, we had to perform two rounds of appraisals for each of the 29 properties. We had to then send them a formal notice that we were appraising their property, and that we were, uh, notifying them that we would start, we were starting the process to acquire right-of-way. And now, uh, over the last, um, three weeks, I think it's been, we've sent out actual formal notices to, to property owners impacted. So I think it's worth saying, just because if anybody's at home and they got a letter from us that's saying, we want to buy your right-of-way, and they don't know what it is, this is what that's referring to. Um, and so we, uh, we will be working with those property owners over the course of the next couple months, trying to get them to voluntarily sign on to the project and sign, um, sign on for the city to purchase the right-of-way. Um, and then, uh, from there, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. So that's where the project is now, and that is what's happening as we speak. Those notices have gone out in the last few weeks.
Thank you, James, appreciate that. Um, I was contacted by Ojai Dr. Helen Petrov, anybody know her? Um, who's a member of the local branch of Physicians for a National Health Program. Um, and so this specific group would like Ojai to consider passing a Medicare-for-all resolution in support of universal, single-payer Medicare-for-all. Healthcare is a human right, and every person in the city of Ojai deserves quality, comprehensive healthcare. This resolution would be a positive step forward to reaching the goal of universal healthcare by allowing Ojai to call on our state and federal legislatures, legislators to work towards the passage of a bill. Uh, Santa Barbara, Galita, and Carpinteria, and 23 other cities in California have already passed this resolution. And they will, uh, the group, a group of doctors will be coming, um, to the meeting, next meeting, to present it. Um, any other future agenda items?
So that's an agenda item?
Yep. Any other items?
Allow them to come and speak before?
Uh, no, to, uh, we would like to pass a resolution for Medicare-for-all, to make Ojai a Medicare-for-all city. Um, any?
It would be probably, I think what I'd imagine is a discussion item with the resolution, and then they would be presenting on it, so.
Okay.
Any other items? No? Okay, well, thank you all so much for a productive, uh, meeting, and, uh, we are adjourned. Yeah, we have, we will, moving to closed session, so you want to go ahead, Matt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll be adjourned to closed session and consider one item regarding anticipated litigation related to a matter in which the City Council believes that litigation, there is a significant exposure to litigation against the city related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation, but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs. No reportable action is expected, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt, uh, all right, let's go.